I'd like to bring to order the March 26th meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mallon.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor LaBeau.
Here.
All present.
At this point, I'd like to give the board to the town's attorney to add an emergency agenda onto the town council agenda.
As you all know, the town's building official will be leaving at the end of this week. And in discussion with the town administrator, the request is that under the Open Meetings Act, Section 42-46-6C, that an emergency item be added to your agenda item to appoint a temporary building official. The administrator will explain that to you. And that would be under the sole source procurement statute, Section 45-55-8B.
So this will be added as number two under new business. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Approval of regular session meeting minutes of February 26, 2018. Approval of executive session meeting minutes of February 26, 2018. Approval of special council meeting minutes of March 3, 2018. Counselor DiMederos and LaBeau abstain, absent. Approval of special council meeting minutes, February 24, 2018. Counselors Shabbat and LaBeau abstain, absent. Approval of special council meeting, January 23, 2018. Counselor DiMederos abstains, absent. Two, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Economic Development Commission. Correspondence received and filed. The Town of Gloucester Resolution Supporting H. 7501 and S. 2419 Implementing In-Person Early Voting. Smithfield School Committee Resolution in Support of Referendum Before Voters Incurring Death of $250,000,000 of Renovations of Existing Construction of New Public Schools. C. Charleston Town Council Resolution Opposing the North Atlantic Region From Consideration for Oil and Gas Exploration and Drilling. D. Armenian National Committee of Rhode Island Requesting Tiverton Participate in Raising Armenian Flag in Memory of the Holocaust Remembrance Day and Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. E. Tiverton Wastewater District Regarding Status of Wastewater Infrastructure Projects. F. Lisa Gershite, and I always kill her name, Gershite, zoning board chair, comments on seminar by Louise Hubert of URI on Nonpoint Education for Municipal Officials Program Workshop Held February 28. Approval of Tax Assessor Abatements, Treasurer Denise Sharat, February expense or revenue reports. Would any of the councils like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Counselor Edwards?
Three E.
What was it?
Three E. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
Three F.
Anyone else? I'd like to pull three D. And five.
I'm gonna do that one, I'm gonna skip it. Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, minus three D, E, and F, and five.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. I'll go in order, three D. That's mine. Armenian National Committee of Rhode Island Requesting Tiverton Participate in Raising the Flag. Armenian Flag in Memory of Holocaust Remembrance Day and Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. Now, we did get a flag last year, correct Nancy? I don't believe we raised it, but could we make sure that it gets raised this year? The date's not here, though.
It's April 24.
Okay, April 24. I don't remember if we raised it last year, but I just want to make sure that our maintenance team is aware of this. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept three D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. CA three E.
Thank you. So with regards to the letter that was sent by the Tiverton Wastewater District, there's a couple items that I wanted to point out to the rest of the council. One regarding the status for them not to accept the bids, and this is driven by the not to exceed cost that they put forward. I'm concerned because I don't believe that this project is going to be able to move forward with those not to exceed numbers. So that's item number one. And then item number two is in the note in the letter that was sent to us, there's a note that mentions that residents of Riverside Drive and Robert Gray Ave will not be impacted by these changes. However, in the state legislation that eliminates the cesspools, there is a specific sunset period that will impact residents who have cesspools or failing systems in these streets, and I'm extremely concerned about their ability to deliver on this promise, which is the whole reason for their existing, is to, you know, prevent our residents from having to replace systems. And I'm concerned that there are going to be residents in those areas that will have to replace a system before the sewers are able to get there because they just don't have the money. And with that, I'll make a motion to accept CA three E.
Joan, do we know for sure that there are cesspools in those areas? There are still some that haven't been changed over in the last 30 years?
I know for sure, yes.
I know where there's one.
Yeah, I believe there are. That probably is, but I think it might be lost.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Unanimous. Three F. Counselor Hilton?
As you may know, at the council's request, Lorraine Hubert from the University of Rhode Island came over to do a seminar on protecting water resources for the council, as well as members of the planning board, the zoning board, and the conservation commission. She did a great job, and Lee C. Gershites from the zoning board wrote a nice note. Given that the council requested that she come, I'm wondering whether or not we might draft, or whether it's okay with the solicitor, draft a short thank you note on behalf of the council thanking her for her participation, and send along a copy of Lee's note with it.
Any discussion from the council? So I'd like to entertain a motion to accept three F with the addition of sending Lisa a thank you note and a copy, I'm sorry, Louise, a thank you note and a copy of Louise's letter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Three. CA five. That would be me. I looked at the actual spending of the town up to this point. There's some line items that are in the red, and I don't worry about that as much, as some others that look like it's very slowly going down. And one of my problems is the fire department, overtime. They don't appear to have enough to last us the rest of the year. But I was looking at their minor equipment replacement account, which has $40,000 in there, and I just want to bring that up because maybe we need to freeze some of their accounts in order to anticipate their increase in overtime. There's a, our electricity accounts are all running out.
Excuse me, can you just tell us where the pages are?
Oh, sure. Page five.
Okay.
The overtime account only has $36,000 left in it. And we do know that we have some problems with open spaces, but if you look down at their minor equipment replacement, they have forty, almost $41,000 in there. So maybe we should be conscious of what they're spending in that account in order to maybe help with the overtime. So I just think, we only have four months to go, but there's a lot of, there's some accounts that are in the red. And I'm not as worried, this account is not in the red, but if you look at their spending, I'm kind of worried that that's going to be gone within the next month and a half. But I'm looking at their other accounts, and they do have excess in their other accounts. So maybe at some point, we need to think about that and do some, and of course, this is directed to the town administrator, that at some point, maybe we need to transfer from some of their accounts and freeze maybe that minor equipment replacement account. This budget is very tight, and there's not a lot of room anywhere, so I'm just thinking that we should anticipate that that account might run short. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve CA five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
Two other items I'd like to point out. Legal counsel. Looks like our burn rate's about $8,500 a month. We're already in the red on that account. And then the other item is in the police department's budget.
Can you tell me the pages?
Page two.
Thank you.
It's account number 7191.
Labor counsel.
Labor counsel? You have it highlighted.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, and I was thinking, I did see that in council contingency, we still have $25,000. So I think we need to be very careful in what we're spending in council contingency, because I think it needs to go to labor counsel.
And, yeah, and to that point, also on page, there's no page numbers on here, but under the police department's, but item, oh, I'm sorry, page six, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you.
Account, where are we at here? The education incentive, 5115. It looks like that account's already in the red as well, and I know that that's something that those education incentives can kind of come and go. I believe you have it. Oh, you don't have it.
No, but what I do have highlighted is education seminar that still has $41,000 in it. So I was thinking that the police could maybe make up the difference in that account.
Yeah, and then the only other item that I wanted to mention with regards to the treasurer's memo that she sends, which is a nice executive summary, the only request that I would make is if we could get some sort of historical numbers or flow on here, or maybe percent to target. So specifically with regards to the, you know, market value of the landfill fund, where are we supposed to be at based on DPW Director Anderson's estimates, and how are we on track to get there? You know, I think we as the board of directors for this municipal corporation should be armed with some of that information.
There was one other thing. The electric accounts, and we were aware that this was happening, they're all, will be in the red very soon, but I do think the treasurer does have a plan for that, and maybe if she could submit a report about that for the next meeting, because I don't think I see that here, do I?
One other item, too, when it pertains to revenue, just, are we on track to hit our revenue targets this year? We are? So we're gonna make up that 11, that 11.5 million in the next four months?
Sure.
All right. Maybe, I mean, this is all just information I'd like to get out there, so maybe we can work with the treasurer on bringing those numbers together.
I asked that last month because it was...
Isn't that the whole tax form?
That's right. That's what it is, is the tax form.
Okay.
Just one more question on the fire department. Does this reflect the air bottles that they were buying?
I believe so. That transfer was already made.
Was it into that equipment account?
I would imagine, I would imagine, if not, Joan, that is a good question, so we'll have to look at that, but this is at, maybe not?
Sure.
Maybe not, because it's February 28.
The administrator's shaking his head.
No.
I don't think so, because this is February...
February 28, I think it just said. Yeah, so we'll look into that and see if we have anything left over in that account. Anything else? With that, I have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Public hearing, advertised public hearing. Public hearing, Stonebridge Fire District Request for Zone Change From Open Space to R. 6D For Plot 221 Lot 601 Continued From February 26th Meaning Updated Planning Board Recommendation. The only thing I want to point out is in our packet, a zoning amendment, if you look in our packet, it's advertised for the wrong thing. It says solo, solo, solo auto voltage system development.
It's the next one under it.
Right, but why is that still on there? That's what I'm asking, because we're not doing that anymore.
This was the original.
Is that the original?
It was back to the original.
Yeah, so that shouldn't have been on there, really. Am I right? Okay. Was that advertised that way, though, or was it correct?
It's supposed to be advertised.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the...
Fine, okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Introduce yourselves, then you can present.
I am Peter Core. I'm an assessor on Stonebridge Water.
I'm Don Mederos, land surveyor and civil engineer with Abel Engineering in Little Compton.
I've put together some information for the council over the last month together. I'd like to give a little presentation briefly as possible and answer any questions that may come up.
Sure, go ahead.
Don Mederos will be bringing these things I'd like for the council.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. So we're here with the Stonebridge Fire District. They're seeking to rezone a parcel of land at the north end of North Brayton Road, Plat 221 Lot 601. This property is owned open space. It's 4.8 acres. It's surrounded by R. 60 residential land to the west, and R. 60 institutional land to the east and south. The institutional land being the Ranger School and the Tiverton High School. The parcel is isolated from open space land to the north by the paved access road to the Ranger School. So essentially, what we have is a 4.8 acre open space island and a sea of R. 60 residential zone. So we're looking to rezone that 4.8 acres of open space to residential R. 60. So we were here before the council a month ago. We've been two times at the last two meetings of the planning board with this petition, with this related petition. And so the Tiverton Open Space Commission, we found, is in favor of the zone change. On December 27, 2017, Gary Plunkett, Mr. Plunkett, I believe is in attendance tonight, is on the Open Space Commission, and he sent a memo or an email to the planning board. It's very brief. I'll read it. He addresses it to Stu Hardy, the chairman, and Susan Gill, the administrative officer, vice chairman. Thanks for alerting the Open Space Commission regarding this proposed subdivision. The plan was discussed at our recent regular meeting on December 18. Considering the location of the parcel surrounded on three sides by developed properties, the commission has no objection to the subdivision nor to changing the zoning comprehensive community plan as necessary to accommodate this specific project. Then the planning board at its March 6, 2018, meeting recommended the zone change to the council. In a letter from the planning board to the council dated March 7, 2018, at that March 6 planning board meeting, Mr. Bill Anderson, the DPW director, who is in attendance tonight, he attended the planning board meeting, and he addressed the drainage concerns of the neighbors. And in the letter from the planning board to the council, third paragraph, Mr. Anderson explained that the Rhode Island Stormwater Design and Installation Standards Manual requires that runoff from impervious surfaces on each of the three proposed house lots be contained and treated on that lot so there is no net increase in stormwater runoff leaving the lot as a result of newly created impervious surfaces. Consequently, should the minor subdivision move into final plan review, stormwater retention measures would be strictly required to assure that there would be no migration of stormwater off-site and no impact on the stormwater treatment system owned and maintained by the Brayton Woods Homeowners Association. If you could allow me just a couple more minutes, I'll sum this up. I know you have a busy agenda tonight. So, just a little, quick little background on the district. The Stonebridge Fire District was established in 1946. Its original mission was fire protection. However, and it still has that function today. However, in the intervening years, its primary purpose changed from fire protection to watershed protection, water supply, and distribution. Over the years, the district has purchased several parcels of land for protecting the watershed of Stafford Pond, which, as we know, is a critical resource for the town. The district provides water to about 1,200 customers in the Stonebridge District, and also provides water to about half the customers in the North Tiverton Fire District. The district maintains two emergency connections with the city of Fall River located at Stafford and Main Roads, and the district has a pipeline under the Sakonet River for emergency connection with Portsmouth. So in this way, the district cooperates with the three neighboring municipalities to provide emergency fire protection. I'm wrapping this up.
No, it's fine.
Please.
It's fine, I'm not rushing you.
The district currently rents an office on Main Road in the Stonebridge area. It's a very old building. It's not ADA accessible, and the parking is not suitable. As you know, it's right down just north of Coastal Roasters. It's a congested area. This presents a problem for the district. The district has a great credit rating. However, it is no longer eligible to receive state and federal grants because its facility is not ADA accessible. This is a huge concern. So what the district is trying to do to get ADA compliant is to sell the three residential lots, which is the subject of this zone change tonight. The proceeds from the sale would go to finance a new ADA compliant facility that the district would then build so that they would then be eligible again to receive federal and state monies. One minute, and I will wrap this up. So the district itself, it's always been a good neighbor, and it's always shown a tremendous amount of goodwill towards the town. Things people may not be aware of or remember. 1997, the town wanted to develop the industrial park to enhance the tax base in a non-residential manner, to, you know, good development, grow smart. The, and the town Industrial Park Committee, they needed to adjust boundary lines, and they needed to relocate certain right-of-ways to make the industrial park work out. The district said, sure, whatever you need, we'll do it. The town then found an anchor for the industrial park as the power plant. Power plant needed a water supply. At that time, the only water supply was at Main Road. So the town would have had to extend a 16-inch water main from Main Road uptown roads to get to the industrial park to serve the power plant. I mean, easily, it cost them millions of dollars. The district said, hey, why don't you, we'll give you an easement, run a water line across our land from the end of North Brayton Road directly to the power plant, shortest route. You're all set. We'll save the taxpayers thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, probably. Okay. 1999, the town wants to build a Ranger School. Town needed land for the school, or the town was going to have to buy land to put the school on. The district said, hey, we'll give you 16 and a half acres. Happy to do it. It's for a good cause, to save the school department money, save the taxpayers money. Then the treatment plant for the high school needed significant upgrades, costs of thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. District donated four acres of land for a sewage treatment leaching area for the, for the plant, which now serves the high school, the Ranger School, and the middle school. Again, huge savings for the town, donated land. 2010, the recreation commission needed land for soccer fields. The district agreed to give the commission eight acres of land for the kids, for recreation. So that's where we're at. We're here tonight. The district has done a lot of things over the years. They basically, they've give, they've give, they've give unconditionally, and now they're at a point where they need something, and we're hoping that they're not going to find out that the response is, what have you done for me lately? Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the public portion of this hearing. Anyone that would like to speak, please come to the microphone. Anyone that would like to speak in the audience regarding this subject, please come to the microphone.
I thought all these guys were here for you.
Last call. Anyone who wants to speak regarding the subject, please come to the microphone. Hi, Sal.
Hi. Just wanted to thank them for...
Introduce yourself.
Sally Black, 64 Broadview Drive. I'd just like to thank the water department, because every time we did come to them, they were more than cooperative, and we couldn't have done it without you. So thank you so much.
And I was also chairman of the school committee at the time, and they were much more than cooperative. They were, they helped us as much as they could when we were building Ranger School. I will be closing the public part of this hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? The public part of this hearing is now closed. Any of the councils want to say anything?
Madam President.
Counsel Edwards?
Thank you. I have a few questions for you guys. As you know, I did the last time. Can you shed a little light for me? How long has this space been open space that you're looking to rezone?
Probably forever. I know that the district purchased the land in the 1960s.
Okay.
And so...
And it's been open space since purchased?
So that was pre-zoning, before even zoning came into effect in Tiverton. So they purchased it for watershed protection as they bought several parcels of land around Stafford Pond. So they've had it that long.
So if we were to consider this, what are we going to do about the back taxes? Because obviously, there's an issue when you convert open space back into something that's going to, you know, be R. 60 zoning. I think that it would be in the interest of the town and the taxpayers and the voters to look at back taxes plus interest. Just a thought. Other couple of questions for you. Have you guys explored any other options since you were here the last time? I know that Counselor Shabbat mentioned potentially working with North Tiverton Fire District since you guys are essentially distributing the same water. There might be an opportunity to co-locate. Okay. Out of curiosity, how many members on the planning board, or any of the boards that you've discussed this with, would have a vested interest in the Stonebridge Fire District flipping these properties back to residential and not having to bond thereby increasing the water rates?
That's a tricky question. I don't know if you would have any answer off the top of your head.
How much land do you guys actually own?
You still own some property on the Stafford Pond?
250 acres.
Okay. Okay. And then, you know, the last, well, two more points. You know, you mentioned you guys have a great credit rating, and that's awesome, right? That's a good thing. But I would like personally to see you guys leverage that credit rating, you know, under the auspices of being a quasi-governmental agency with the ability to issue bonds, and go down that route rather than take and convert open space into residential properties. Just my thought. And I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else from the council have anything to add?
No.
Counselor LaBeau?
You guys know, last time we were here, I was against this. I'm still not, I don't believe it's a great idea, but to separate, you're putting three, basically three homes in Ranger's parking lot, or Ranger's, on Ranger's property, the way it looks like on this plot. So to break it up into three, you know, three more homes in Ranger's, it's like it's in Ranger's yard, the school of, you know, the middle school, the grammar school over there. There's nothing else that you guys can do somewhere in town other than those three lots?
If I could address that, Counsel LaBeau, what the, what the planning board asked us to do, and we agreed to do, was to designate a 60-foot buffer zone between, on the back of the three lots, so between the rear of the residential lots and the Ranger School, there'll be a 60-foot. It's densely wooded land now, and that's the way it'll remain. So the planning board did ask us to do that, because they were sensitive to that proximity of the school.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else come? Counselor Perry, did you want to say something?
Yeah, well, I was just going to comment. They changed the zoning when they built the Ranger School, because you couldn't have any schools in a open space. They rezoned it then. I don't see what the problem is changing it now.
I think virtually, they didn't rezone that area because Ranger didn't need it. So it just stayed the way it was. Is that correct?
We did a little bit of research on that, and it's, and we're not totally clear. But we do know that a school is not allowed in an open space zone.
Right.
So it had to be changed. We're not really clear how it was changed. And why this 4.8 acres often got left behind. I mean, it clearly should have been changed with the school.
Well, I think it's because we... Well, I think it's because we didn't, at the time, the school department didn't need those, that acreage, so it was just left there, and not even thought about, to be quite honest with you.
And according to, you know, the planning board, they approved it with the stipulations on the back.
Yep.
I don't see why it should be a problem.
Councilor Hilton?
Madam President, I, while I'm sympathetic to the idea that, you know, you hate to see open space change, you know, this is a small piece of open space that's surrounded by fully developed land, and the Open Space Commission, I don't think would have given their blessing unless they recognized this. And given everything that Stonebridge has done as a good community citizen, I think it's a worthwhile thing. But as much as anything, and I am aware from my time on the Conservation Commission, that the low-interest money that Stonebridge gets from the USDA through the Rural Water Association is very important to them in maintaining their infrastructure, and it's the least expensive money, if I'm not mistaken, that they have access to. And, you know, USDA and the federal government has been fussing for a number of years about the lack of handicap access at the office. So, you know, I understand that Stonebridge needs a new building, and it needs new building so that it continue to have access to that low-interest money to improve its infrastructure. And, you know, while there may be other potential ways to raise money, you know, most of them, it seems to me, would involve passing on some costs to the customers, which include, as you mentioned, not just the direct customers of Stonebridge, but also the customers of North Tiverton, because they buy water from you. And especially this week, given the new assessments, I'm not inclined to add to anybody's burden at this point. So I think that this is a, this is a good arrangement on a piece of property that is not that valuable as open space, but is valuable to the district in order to continue to have access to the money that they need. So I would like to make a motion to approve the zoning amendment that has been submitted, and accepting the planning board's agreed-upon recommendations.
Second? I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Edwards?
One final item for the rest of the council to consider, because this has been, it's been discussed, you know, about how this is, you know, this is not that valuable as open space. You know, the real question I have is, by whose definition are we defining what is value as open space? And what are we doing to set a precedent going forward? You know, if tomorrow, the land trust comes to us and says, you know, there's a section of pardon gray right in the middle, we'd love to put a house there, and if you let us put this house there, we'll be able to sell it for big bucks and go out and buy more open space, are we going to bend over backwards and do that for them? Because I'm not inclined to do so. Open space is there for a reason. And furthermore, if we're going to go forward with this, I think that the town and the voters should benefit in some form of back taxes assessed on these properties.
Well, I think the voters are benefiting, because they'll be able to build their handicap-accessible building and be able to take the profits from this, so that the people who are getting water from this district will not have to bear the cost.
How about the taxes they lost on the land they gave to the town to use for other things? That was a loss to them too, so, I mean...
The district doesn't get taxes.
The same.
North Tiverton gets taxes.
I think Joe's talking about the Ranger School property.
The Ranger School, they gave them the land.
There's a direct benefit to the town for that, in the form of the school.
Right. So I think they showed good faith in doing stuff, I think, you know.
There is no direct benefit to the town with these properties. There's none. There's a direct benefit to the new homeowners, but there's no direct benefit to the other voters in town.
Councilor Hilton?
With regard to the back taxes, and I don't know if the tax assessor is here, but if this follows the same open space regulations as every other open space in the state, there's a prescribed program when you move property out of open space, depending on how, here comes Dave, but depending on how long the property's been in open space. So there is a predetermined, prescribed set of events that happen around back taxes, and maybe Dave can clarify that.
That would be correct. If the David Rauma tax assessor, if the property has not been in the program for at least 15 years, there'd be a use change penalty tax. If they have been in the program for at least 10, 15 years, and now you're changing the zoning, there would be no mechanism to collect any type of back taxes per state statutes, because it's not an error in assessment, it's not an omission, this is simply a change of zoning.
I'm confused by that, because it seems to me that the district is here arguing that this is essentially an error in the zoning change, because it should have been R60 when the Ranger School was converted to R60.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? Is this property in the farm, forest, and open space program?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, so actually, you know, I stand corrected, because they wouldn't even qualify.
So I don't think it even qualifies to be in farm, forest, and open space, because it's under 10 acres.
Right. So I stand corrected on that, that there wouldn't be no mechanism for the use change penalty. And if they're arguing that there was an error in the classification back in the day, again, it's an open space zoning classification, not a farm, forest, so I'm not sure if we would be able to take a look at it, but I would definitely talk with our solicitor to see if...
Thank you. Councilor LeBeau?
Well, I'm looking at this chart here. Is there any way that the school department could purchase this property from you to finish off that lot and put this thing to bed?
I don't think they need it.
But whether they need it or not, I mean, they donated all the other land, let them pony up a few bucks, they get their building, the school range gets their area, and there's no new houses, no new...
I don't think the school department can actually purchase land, can they, Tony? Like, it's town-owned land that the school department is building. The schools on, they don't own this land or building that they're occupying for students right now.
Yes.
Well, it would just look better if the school got that property some way, shape, or form, than have three houses across the street on a school, on a school grounds. It's just, just an idea, just thrown out there.
If I remember this property, it's quite a bit away from the school. And like you said, there's all woods there, right? So it's not like their backyard is going to be right there where the kids are playing. It's far away.
It's, so the...
It's down the driveway.
Yeah, so the property is between North Brayton Road and the Ranger School. So North Brayton Road would be the front yard.
Right.
The Ranger School would be the abutter in the rear. As we said, there's going to be a 60-foot landscape easement buffer zone between the rear of the residential yard and the school.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the council? So I have a motion on the floor in a second. Does everyone, everyone's aware of the motion?
Peter?
Nancy, would you repeat the motion? It's to approve...
The motion?
Is to approve the zoning amendment and the planning board agreement.
Madam President?
Yes.
One more comment.
Councilor Shabbat?
The way I look at it is, they have donated a huge amount of land to the town. If the town had to pay for that land, it would certainly more than cover any back taxes on this particular small lot. It's only, it's less than five acres. So, in comparison, we probably still owe them a debt of gratitude for what they have donated this town. Thank you, Madam President.
So I have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor? Against? Six, four, one against. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing on proposed ordinance amendment requested by Raymond Johnson, Camaco Holdings LLC on Article 4, Section 5, Public Utility Uses. Section 6J, Open Recreation Uses, and Article 10, Section 3, Parking, Storage, and Use of Major Recreational Equipment in a Residential District, continued from February 12 meeting. A, Planning Board Recommendation, December 6, 2017. B, Planning Board Recommendation, January 10, 2018. C, Revised Ordinance Proposal by Raymond Johnson slash Camaco Holdings LLC. Gentlemen, we're not going to fight about this. I think I'll hear from Mr. Johnson's attorney first, and then, go ahead.
I just had a procedural question.
All right, just introduce yourself, please.
That's what I was going to do also.
Andrew Tights, Deas and Thomas, EITZ, an attorney with offices at 2 William Street in Providence, Rhode Island, representing several of the neighbors here. I just wanted to ask procedurally, as far as, I understand that the attorney would be presenting various testimony, including expert witnesses, and I wanted to find out whether you will entertain, will you allow me to cross-examine any of those witnesses? Or do you want to have him go through his entire presentation, and then we'll go forward? That's my question. I would like the opportunity to at least cross-examine people that he puts forward as an expert.
I have to refer to the attorney on this.
This is a public hearing. The applicant should be allowed to put on whatever presentation they want. The public should be allowed to speak, but this is not a court hearing. I don't recommend that you have cross-examination on these matters at all.
That's my answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If you'd like to take a seat, you may.
Come on. Yeah, you can sit there.
Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Michael Mano, from Kelly, Souza, Rocha, and Parmenter, here on behalf of the applicants, Raymond Johnson and Camaco Holdings LLC. Tonight, for our presentation, we have three experts, and also, I'd like to briefly do some Q and A with Mr. Johnson. The first expert that we have is Ashley Sweet. She's our planning consultant. She's prepared a report that we've submitted to you via email last week. I also brought hard copies tonight that, I believe, have been circulated by the town clerk to each of you. We also have Eric Wishart. He's a sound engineer, and he'll be presenting his report, which we also submitted to you last week by letter, and I've, again, brought hard copies of that tonight. We have Paul Bernard, who is a real estate appraiser, will be briefly presenting his testimony. And then, as I indicated, I'd like to do some Q and A with Mr. Johnson before we conclude our presentation.
I'd interrupt you just for a second. Tony, they are bringing expert witnesses here. Is it within my purview to let Councilor Tights question these people since?
You can, but it's a, it's a public hearing.
Right, and in all fairness, though, why wouldn't he be able to ask questions to these expert witnesses? Because we're taking them as expert, and only their counsel is allowed to.
Well, actually, I'm going to get to that in a second. But my, I have a quick procedural question, because, you know, the application that came in was for two uses, public utility uses and open recreational uses. Remember last month that the town council entertained and approved an amendment to the zoning ordinance that allowed for these public utility uses last month? It was the solar panels.
The solar panels, correct.
So are you proceeding on that tonight, or is it just on the open recreational uses?
No. As you may recall, we had originally submitted the proposed amendment, which had that utility use section. The revised version that we submitted deleted that section from our proposed amendment. So that was one of the changes that we made in that revised version.
I just wanted to make sure, because there was some, the notice had included that because it's a continuance from the prior ones. So you're just proceeding on the open recreational uses?
Correct. And I'll just note again that the major change to that, besides deleting that public utility uses section, was to change the use from permitted to requiring a special use permit and being subject to those performance standards that we included in the revised version.
So my question is, usually, in a farm like this, I don't have expert witnesses coming and testifying.
Well, that's my...
So that's what my concern is. If their lawyers are allowed to bring those expert witnesses here, wouldn't it be only fair that the other lawyer is allowed to ask them questions?
Well, actually, before we even get to that, too, I'll tell you that in my advice for your other boards, where these types of witnesses come with greater frequency than here, the advice is, and my advice would be here, is not to qualify any witnesses as experts. The term "expert witness" only means, under court rules, that a witness is allowed to give opinion testimony. So, because this is a public hearing, because the public is going to be coming, giving their opinions, that wouldn't mean you have to qualify everybody as an expert. So I say, whoever they have, just bring them up, don't qualify them, and whatever they say, it just goes to the weight of their testimony and how much believability that you can put on it. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is I, if you want, it's up to the town council, because you set your own ground rules. What I'm concerned about is, I don't want this to turn into a court hearing type of a situation, where you have cross-examination, and then there's objections, and to me, that defeats the purpose of a public hearing. The public should be allowed to speak. And if they have some people that want to come up, that have some, might have some knowledge in an area, that's fine, too. If you think it's appropriate to have Mr. Tights question them, that's all right also. But I'm just concerned that this is going to turn into witnesses, and there's objections, and then there's appeal on procedure, and that is not, public hearings are not court hearings.
All right, and Mr. Tights can certainly comment on what he feels that that opinion was, and if he disagrees with that.
Correct, yes.
Madam President?
But these are not expert witnesses, you're saying? Oh, we shouldn't recognize them, is that...
You're going to let everybody give their opinions. There is no need to qualify anyone as an expert.
Okay. Councilwoman Edwards?
Just to add to this, because I would be opposed to any sort of a cross-examination situation, because it seems like when we get into these open public forums, when we start allowing people to talk to each other, rather than direct their comments to the council, things go off the rails very quickly, and this can become a long-drawn-out process. And there's obviously a lot of people that are here. So, you know, I think we should just maintain that everyone directs their comments to the council, and leave it at that.
I second that. I don't want to sit here and be a judge. That's not what I'm elected to be, a judge. I'm not, nor am I qualified.
I would really ask the audience to try to keep it down without any comments or laughter or anything. We're trying to get through this tonight. Attorney Mano, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So with that, I'll introduce Ashley Sweet, who's going to present her report.
I have copies of my resume, if you want to present that. Oh, you did? Okay. Then I'll keep this. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ashley Sweet. I'm a professional planning consultant. I have a master's degree in community planning from the University of Rhode Island, with 15 years of municipal planning experience, and the past five years, I've been doing professional planning consulting work. I'm also the legislative liaison for the Rhode Island Chapter of the American Planning Association, and I'm a member of the State Planning Council Technical Committee. I've prepared a report for you tonight, which was presented to you in an email and paper copies for you. In preparing for that report, I have reviewed your comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinance, 13 police reports for the site at 691 Brayton Road. I have walked and driven the site and drove the neighborhood in the immediate surrounding area. Can we put that up on a something, so everyone can see it? Do we have anything? So I'd like to start by giving you a brief overview of the existing site and the existing conditions of the site.
Just the one on the ground.
Whoa.
He's fired. There's only, I understand you're talking about the site, but don't forget it's all R82. This is, this is, this is an amendment to your R80 zone.
Right, all this is R80.
This is R80, but you have other properties in the R80 zone, too.
I don't know why we're going through this, though. To this extent, all right.
Your, may I?
Sure.
Your applicant here is proposing an amendment to the zoning ordinance for the R80 zone, which covers a large part of your town.
This piece of land is not the only R80.
Exactly right.
That will be affected by this.
Exactly right. So I think what Ms. Sweet is doing is, is saying why this zone change would be appropriate for this particular property. However, you got to bear in mind that this would be for the, you know, for all of your R80s zone, so I think what you're going to say tonight, you ought to direct it not only to this lot, but why you think it's appropriate in the... but why you think it's appropriate in the R-80 zone.
And I have done that. I've addressed that in the report, and in my presentation tonight. I'll discuss with you not only this site, but also the entire zone as well. Because as you can see from the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, there are restrictions in terms of where that can happen. So if you look through your, if you look through the Tiverton, and you look at the parcels that this would apply to, there's, I've come up with about five pieces of property that would meet the criteria, being over 100 acres, and have, and I don't know about the ingress and egress. It's required to have two means of ingress and egress, that you can't really tell that by looking at GIS and kind of, you know, going over the properties, looking at it that way. But there are about, from my estimations, there's five properties that are privately owned, which are sites that are not owned by the Town of Tiverton, or the Nature Conservancy, or some kind of conservancy organization that would meet the criteria. So in reality, we're talking about five pieces of property, including, or actually, it would be six pieces, six pieces of property, including this site. So I know that a good portion of your town is zoned R-80, but when you take into consideration the standards that are put into the proposed ordinance, you've narrowed that down to about six pieces of property. And then there are additional standards in here that I don't know that those six pieces of property can necessarily meet. It may even be less than that. So I'm addressing the report and the zone change to this particular property and the other five pieces of property that I've estimated that this would affect. But I think it's important to understand this piece of property, because it is the applicant and owner of this property that is proposing this, and would essentially be utilizing, or attempting to utilize, this zone change initially. So if you'll allow me, I'd like to give you, I'll do it briefly, give you kind of a brief overview, so you can understand the lay of the land on this site. So this site is, has an existing grandfathered gravel extraction business. You can see it's pretty heavily industrialized. I've been out on the site, walked and driven the entire perimeter of the area. There are some very large machines on that site that sift and sort and create gravel and sand on the property. There's, at the front of the property, in this area here, there is an eight-acre-
So there's machinery on that property right now?
There's a, there's an existing grandfathered gravel extraction business.
Right, but you said there's machinery present there.
That's operated as the gravel extraction business.
Is that true, Tony?
No.
Well, there's no license for the property.
There's no license for that? That shouldn't be-
It's a grandfathered use.
Yeah, but they're not using it.
I'm not here to debate an existing operation. I'm just here to make a presentation.
Right, but you're saying they're operating a business on there right now? Is that what you're saying? Because it's not licensed to do so.
I don't know what your licensing requirements are. I'm not here to discuss licensing. I'm here to present a report.
Okay.
If there's issues, that's something between you, have to take up between you and the owner in licensing.
Okay.
Anyway, it's a heavily industrialized site. As I was pointing out, the front of the site, there's an eight-acre portion of the site towards Brayton Road, that is the Firestone landfill site. That is unusable land currently, and it has a remediation plan, working with DEM, to remediate that portion of the site. When you do travel the existing area, as many of you, I'm sure, do know, there are some businesses in the area that are in operation on Brayton Road and the existing crossroads near them, several kennels, auto salvage and recycling yards, several tree companies that work in that area. So it is not entirely a residential neighborhood. You can see from the site, in the northern portion of the site, there is some existing tracks that are ridden. There, on occasion, there have been a large number of riders on the site. My understanding is that there's been about 30 to 40 people riding on the site at one time. Those rides have happened in 15-minute intervals. During those times, there have been complaints filed, and the police have arrived, and none of those complaints have resulted in noise violations. You can read from the noise complaints that officers did sit at the, sit across the street for 15 to 20 minutes at a time, and at no point have they ever witnessed excessive noise. The proposed use of the site moving forward, if the amendment is approved, is to expand upon and approve, improve the existing facility for education and training. The idea is to provide a safe and legal location for Tiverton and surrounding area riders to be properly trained on safety and proper riding techniques. Right now, the alternative is illegal riding and unsafe riding conditions that do disturb neighborhoods and utilize private property without consent. The intent is an operation that caters to all ages of the population. I think there's a misconception, and I was guilty of it before fully understanding this project and this site, that many of these riders, or a majority of these riders, are, you know, 20-year-old men who go ripping up and down the streets and tearing through property, and that's not necessarily the case, although that is a faction of the population of riding. That would not be tolerated on that site. The intent here is to make sure that any bikes that ride on the site have noise-suppressing devices, that they're heavily regulated, that they're kept between reasonable hours for riding times. There's an earthen berm that already exists in this area, and that assists greatly with reducing noise from the site. That would be updated and enhanced to increase that protection. Rules would be implemented that only 30 riders would be on the track at one period of time, and that heats would only last for 15 to 20 minutes at a time, and that any event that was held, events would be held, you know, four to five times per year, and that any event that was held, was, would be held between the hours of 10 and 2. These are not all-day full events, although there might be more people on the site for longer periods of time. The riding itself would only be taking place for 15 to 20-minute intervals for those hours between 10 and 2. So in the report, I have given you a section that talks about consistency with the zoning ordinance, and the proposal before you requires that any application for one of these facilities would be required to get a special use permit from the zoning board, and the existing language in the zoning ordinance for a special use permit requires that the zoning board find positively on six items. One, that the public convenience and welfare will be served. Two, that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare. Three, that it will be compatible with neighboring uses and will not adversely affect the general character of the area. Four, that it will not create a nuisance in the neighborhood, nor hinder or endanger vehicular or pedestrian movement. That it will have adequate provision for water service, sanitary sewage disposal, and fire protection. And six, that it will be compatible with the comprehensive community plan of the Town of Tiverton. Those standards already exist in your ordinance, and the zoning board is required to find positively for all of those items to grant a special use permit. So with any property that would apply under the zone change for the allowance of an outdoor recreation facility such as this, they would have to find positively for those, and they would have overview and have the ability to ensure that any standards are put in place, or any conditions are placed on the application that would require that any application would meet those standards. The zoning board has a great deal of oversight and ability to place standards and requirements on an application to make sure that the public interest is protected in those six items under the special use permit process. And they also have the ability to place additional conditions on the site in the name of meeting any of those requirements. The next section of the report that I provided for you talks about the comprehensive plan. And I looked through your comprehensive plan in each element to look for sections, or language, or goals and policies that this project and the zone change itself would work to meet. So I won't go through the entire thing, but I'll just kind of highlight some of the sections. The natural resources and cultural, the natural and cultural resources element talks about preserving scenic vistas. This site would be indistinguishable from the street. You wouldn't see it as you drove by. You can see there's a large area of wooded, they have 2,200 feet of frontage on Brayton Road. It's heavily wooded for several hundred feet into the property, providing a significant buffer. So it would be indistinguishable driving by to the average motorist. The land use plan element talks about supporting the diversification of town, the town tax base, and increasing the net revenue through non-residential development. And in doing that, it also talks about preservation of rural character and the small-town feel of Tiverton. But with as much space as available and the requirement that any of these, any of these facilities happen on over 100 acres, you have the ability, and the ability of the zoning board, to put conditions on the properties. You have the ability to kind of keep these out of sight. They would be easily hidden on over 100 acres, and having the zoning board have the ability to regulate them and work with the applicant. The open space coastal resources and recreation element talks about providing recreation for the community. It talks about the lack of recreation ability, especially in northern Tiverton, and this is an opportunity for the town to provide active recreation at no cost to the community. The applicant, as a private landowner, would upkeep and maintain this facility on his own, out of his own pocket, at his own cost, but it would be available for an existing recreation community in Tiverton and surrounding towns that are seeking a safe and legal place to conduct this activity currently. The economic development element does talk heavily about diversifying the tax base and trying to find local businesses that would result in a net tax revenue, while not negatively impacting the community. Again, being that there are standards in the proposed ordinance, and the ability of the zoning board through the special use permit process to place conditions on the property, I do believe that you have the ability here to have a net tax revenue for this site and for other potential sites. One thing to keep in mind when considering this is that the property is zoned residential, so it is available for house lot development. It's 80,000 square feet by right for every single-family home. If it were developed under its current zoning, you could potentially yield 40 to 50 single-family homes, which could produce 70 to 90 school-aged children, which could put a tremendous strain on traffic and the financial resources of the community. Educating children, unfortunately, is always a net loss to the town, but this would provide an opportunity for a net tax revenue and keep the property, you know, keep the property as open space and as a recreation facility. The comprehensive plan does have a common theme in each of its elements, to protect the rural character and small-town feel. The property owner is proposing a zoning amendment to allow for his business to contribute to the town's tax base while still maintaining and upholding that goal of the plan. And providing for that special use permit for any outdoor recreation facility in this zoning district will require a minimum of 100 acres to do so. Will go a long way to ensuring that the town has adequate input in the decision-making process to ensure that the goals of the plan are upheld. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
And now I'd like to introduce Eric Wishart, who's one of our other witnesses tonight.
Good evening. My name is Eric Wishart. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island. For the record, the state of Rhode Island does not have a registration process for noise engineers. My training regarding noise, it comes from my years spent as a professional musician, as well as my time at Brooklyn College of Music, where I studied music production and engineering. I was asked to perform a rudimentary analysis for the site-specific use of Mr. Johnson's property. My testimony has nothing to do with the zone change in terms of the rest of the town. It is specifically the property owned by Mr. Johnson. So I set up in a couple of locations by the map here, the corner of Ferrera Drive, and at the first curve inside Deer Run. And it's the, and one other location that I did twice at the beginning of the study and at the end of the time that I was there, just to see if there was any particular change, and that was at the driveway entrance to the property at 691 Brayton Road. The equipment that was used is a very high-level instrument. It is compliant with the ANSI 1.4 standard for these particular devices. It is also calibrated each time the device is used. The calibration occurs before as well as after the reading. It's a self-contained unit that is calibrated to a particular pitch, as well as a decibel level, and if there's any change in anything regarding the readings, the calibration self-adjusts all of the results inside the device. I then have the ability to download those results and take a look at them over, excuse me, over time. Each one of, each these, both of these, I'm sorry, each location that was looked at, I parked upon the location for approximately 15 minutes and did a continuous stream of data. It's important to note that while the device is picking up all of the peaks and valleys of the study time, the final net result is a time-weighted average for the particular, for the particular interval. That 15-minute time, that 15-minute use is then averaged over the entire hour and assumed to be the ambient level that occurred at that location. The, I was there from approximately noon to 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock on that particular afternoon, and I, the particular conditions of the, it was relatively cold, but it was a very sunny day, very clear-air day, and there was very little, there's basically no tree cover at the moment, be the study having been done over the wintertime. It was, my point in saying that is, it was particularly conservative to do the readings at that time. When the peak use of the property comes in, sometimes spring, spring, summertime, there will be significant tree cover, which will add additional buffering to the, from the site. But bottom line, what I discovered is that the ambient noise from the, coming from that particular area, already exceeds the ordinance-prostated limit from the 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM time period. The use of the property with the, at the time, 12 vehicles that were on the site, did not register anything that was over, that exacerbated the existing ambient. The ordinance doesn't generate, I'm sorry, by the language of the ordinance, you don't generate an actual fine or violation until it's consistently three decibels over the noise limit. The worst-case position during the study period was approximately seven-tenths of a decibel increase. The property, the use is significantly distant from the residential abutters, and so, and therefore, it was not an issue of to generating a noise, excuse me, generating a noise violation. The worst case, as was described, there's approximately 30 riders would be possibly present during any particular heat. 30 riders presents approximately 110 decibels coming from the specific site- 30 riders presents approximately 110 decibels coming from the specific site. But when you get out to the remote areas, I shouldn't say remote, when you get out to the neighborhoods of those first receivers, it has significantly dissipated by the time you get there. Theoretically, it would take 200 riders to get up to 119 decibels, which consequently is actually the rating of the sand and gravel pit operation material, I'm sorry, wrong word, the sand and gravel pit operation mechanics, which also applies to the abutting land use to the north, which is also a sand and gravel pit. And that was done simply by comparison. The 119 decibels is not something that's actually possible coming from the site, because you couldn't possibly, it would be chaos with 100 riders at the same time on the property. The, I have made some recommendations in order to reduce the impact of any noise that would be annoying to the neighbors by the consistent application of factory mufflers rather than aftermarket mufflers. What I mean by aftermarket mufflers are things like tuned pipes, which generate a much higher, consistent resonant tone. And by not using those and just going with, staying with the basic mufflers, you won't get that additional peaking. Although I still didn't see during, again, during the actual study period, there weren't any actual issues at the neighbors. But again, it's really more of an annoyance to most folks. As Ashley already actually noticed, excuse me, there were 13 police reports that I was, provided a copy of. I don't know if they were some that predate the August, the period of August and September from last year. But in those 13 reports, approximately eight different officers all went to the site, and none of them, none of those reports cited any particular noise violation. Most of the reports actually indicated that the officer didn't hear any noise coming from the property whatsoever. There's nothing in the report that says they actually did a recording of the sound through a device, but it's just simply not noted in their reports. The end result of my study is simply that the use of the property that Mr. Johnson has does not create any noise issues regarding the town noise ordinance. I find that the noise ordinance as-is is usable and usable for the property without any particular issues. If there's any need to do further study at the property, that can certainly be done. But at the moment, I don't see any issues, sorry, I don't see any usages that would generate a noise violation based on the proposed use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to present Paul Bernard.
Members of the council, my name is Paul Bernard. I'm a certified residential real estate appraiser in Rhode Island. I'm a broker in Rhode Island. I'm a contractor in Rhode Island. So we can shake all that up. I've been around a while. I got my license when I was 21. That was in 1963. You're not even that old yet.
No, I'm not.
And I was called Friday to do an appraisal, not an appraisal, to have a look at the site, which I knew about the site, and because someone had written an article saying that this site would devaluate the properties of people 20 percent. Now, I can't stand here and say, "I'm going to evaluate the property 20 percent." Nobody can tell you what's going to happen with the property valuation and that valuation. I mean, that's almost an impossible thing to do. I did take a good look at the site today. I did take a good ride all around the neighborhood. Deer Lane, very nice houses, beautiful houses. And the site that, where the track is, the dirt bike track, is pretty, pretty far away. And listening to these two witnesses here, all right, by the way, Ashley, in case I forget, you did a wonderful job, by the way. I don't see any reason why the values of any property in the town of Tiverton would go down from this site. No reason at all. You listen to the noise person, you listen to Mr. Sweet. I mean, there's no reason why it's going to go down. There's no reason why it's going to go up. What makes property go up and down is taxes. And what brings taxes up? Schools, young people, which we have to educate. You heard someone mention that. There could be 90 houses in there. Imagine if you wanted to put a trailer park in there. How many trailers could you have there? Wow. How many kids would you have? That does make property values go down. All right? So, you know, I don't see any reason why, and I don't want to spend all kind of time here, there's no reason why the taxes will go up or down. We don't know that yet. Nobody knows that yet. Okay? There's no expert that can come up here and say, "Your taxes are going to go down." All right? One thing I'm very happy about, and I have to say this because I want to see how sure I'm going to be, I really want to compliment all of you people in the council. I was amazed that you approved the casino. Of course, I'm very upset about it. I was all for the casino. I live in Newport. All right? And we've pushed for that casino. All right? And it comes to Tiverton. One of the greatest benefits, believe me, as an appraiser, I'm telling you, one of the greatest benefits you have. Of course, I don't see where it's in Tiverton. It looks like it's more in Far Riv, but that doesn't matter. I come from Far River. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just do a brief Q and A with Mr. Johnson.
Council President, council members, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Raymond Johnson, 691 Brayton Road.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, how many parcels make up your property at 691 Brayton Road?
I know you're going to ask me a technical question. Four.
And approximately how many acres total, if you add up all the parcels?
Well, there's 180, total 178.
And that includes the portion that's the former Firestone landfill?
That's correct.
And that site where the former landfill is, that's not a portion of your property that would be implicated or that you're seeking to develop with this proposal?
Not at this date.
And currently, there's no, there's no use for that site until it's remediated?
That is a superfund site. That's correct.
And when did you buy the properties, Mr. Johnson? And how long has the property had an existing gravel business, to your knowledge?
My research goes back to 1951.
So when you purchased the properties in the 90s, there was an existing gravel extraction business there?
Correct.
And since you purchased the properties, you've continued to utilize that gravel extraction operation, correct?
Correct.
And how frequently, on average, do you use the gravel extraction business?
At least two to three times a year.
And usually, what are the hours that you're operating the equipment?
Normally, from 7:00 to 5:00, but we are allowed to operate from 7:00 to 7:00.
Could you describe the type of equipment and machinery that you have out there currently?
There's a couple of primary jaw crushers. There's a secondary crusher. There's screening material, screening equipment, several different pieces of screening equipment. There's composting equipment. There's lots of excavation equipment. And earth, you know, earth removal and grading equipment.
And I believe there was some mention during one of the presenters about an abutting property that's next to yours, and there's another gravel business on that property?
Correct. There's a gravel pit directly to the north of me.
And does that pit operate every day?
Every day, yes. Well, six days a week. They're not there on Sundays.
Could you just briefly describe where the existing motocross track is in your property in relation to the gravel pit?
It's in the northern pit area. There's one in the northern pit area, which is a supercross track. The smaller kids' pit bike track is down in the lower, would be the lower western, south corner of the property.
How long have those tracks been there?
They were, let me see, we built the first one right at the end of 2009.
And who maintains those tracks currently?
I do.
Where you obtained the material to maintain the tracks?
I donate it.
And what equipment do you use to maintain the tracks?
Loaders, graders, dozers, backhoe.
But it's all your equipment, not someone else's?
Correct.
And as you're driving into the property, could you just describe what is there currently if you go up the driveway?
When you first enter my property, the driveway is approximately 100 feet wide. You come into the property, the first thing that you get to would be a scale house. That's approximately 900 feet from Brayton Road. There are three office trailers at that location, and then there's a large metal building, which is a maintenance shop. Several pieces of equipment out there all the time. And then it gets into the opening section of the permitted pit area, which is about 1,800 feet from the road.
How many means of ingress and egress are there currently to your property?
There are currently four.
Could you just describe where those are, please?
There's one at our main entrance. There's a deeded egress entrance at the old historical cemetery site. There's also a secondary entrance on the former Firestone landfill. And then there's another entrance at the northern property line that I share with my neighbor, the other gravel pit.
Now, you've described to your north, there's someone else's gravel extraction business.
Correct.
Could you just describe the other properties that are directly adjacent to yours?
There's a couple of residential across the street on the east side of the property, on the Brayton Road side. The west side of the property is complete open space. The south side of the property is buffered by another lot that we own separately. And then I think there's a four-acre strip that runs approximately back to Eight-Rodway easement that the town owns. And then there's another private strip that's undeveloped landlocked, and then it becomes Maple Drive, the backside of Maple Drive.
Yes, excuse me. Tony, are we off-subject here a little bit?
I was about to say, Mike, this is not, these questions, while interesting, don't really go to the change that you're proposing. So I think rather than doing the Q and A, just come right out and say what you're looking for here and why you think it's appropriate.
And I also have another question. Is he licensed to run a gravel extraction? I never even knew that existed. There is no license for that, am I correct? We don't know that that's functioning.
If you have a comment.
Okay.
Your question about whether it's licensed or not, I can represent to you that, to my knowledge, Mr. Johnson has not been cited with any violation of any town ordinance.
Because I don't think that anyone in town knew he was doing that. To be honest with you.
Well, it was actually part of, I believe, Mr. Tice's expert's report that you received several months ago. I haven't made it a secret. I believe I've described it when I've been here and in front of the planning board. And it's a use that's been there that has predated the adoption of the zoning ordinance. So as was indicated, I believe it's a grandfathered use of the property.
Yeah, but he didn't maintain the license. That's what I understand. Once you don't maintain the license, it no longer is the use.
Yeah, I wasn't solicitor at the time, but I'm sure Mr. Tice, who's here, was, can talk about the backstory on that. I know that there was a receivership and all that. So I'm not, I'm not even so, not even so sure that that's relevant. And I don't want to, I just think it's best for the council, if you're asking for a zone change, to kind of just get right to it and say why you think that this amendment to the zoning ordinance is appropriate here.
Well, here's why I think it's appropriate, and I will let Mr. Johnson comment on that briefly. We're talking about a site that's already heavily industrialized and preserving the open character of it, allowing for recreational use on a commercial basis there as opposed to what's there now, which is a superfund site that has no current use for it whatsoever, and an approximately 150-acre gravel pit. So that's why we've highlighted that for you, as well as the fact that the use that is being proposed in this amendment would be significantly less in terms of noise and traffic and dust, et cetera, than what's there currently. And the fact that he has directly to his north a similar type of gravel business that's operating all throughout the week, I think this just shows that the use that he wants to implement there is going to be a dramatic improvement over what's there currently. And if you could give a little background on that, it seems like the council has more questions, so maybe appropriate just to address it.
I recognize the need for a safe, legal place to ride. I'm a rider. I love to ride. That's our community. I've ridden in that pit since I was eight years old. Over 50 years I've been riding in that pit. We came before you on several occasions for special permits to host events. I basically started this back in 2009 with trying to get before the council to propose this project. And as you said, I went through a receivership and went through some financial hardship and put that behind me. And now, you know, those obstacles are out of the way, and that's why we're pursuing it at this time. We recognize the need for open space and recreation in Tiverton and being a taxpayer and a resident in the town of Tiverton and a lifelong member of the town of Tiverton. I recognize the need for good tax-based projects. And I believe that this property would be better suited to benefit the town and my neighbors and myself than it would be for this proposed operation than it would be for residential.
Any questions?
Madam President, I have just a question for the solicitor. I know, you know, we're here today, here in a presentation, it has to do with motocross racing, but hypothetically speaking, if Mr. Johnson was in front of us asking to put a golf course in, would this amendment satisfy that ability? Yes. Now, without this amendment, would somebody be able to put a golf course in?
No.
No, because it'd be a business.
I just want to make sure that we're not getting hung up on, because I think we're here to address the issue of the R-80 zone. And to me, the, you know, whether it's motocross, or a golf course, or walking trails, is a moot point. We need to figure out whether or not we would think that this would be beneficial, given the amount of land that we have in the R-80 zone. And what we ultimately would like to see go down there, because, you know, as multiple people have commented, if it's houses, that could be a significant financial burden for the town, and as we've already seen with the tax rate.
Just one caveat, because Mr. Johnson has been clear with what he proposes to do for this site, it's not going to be a golf course.
Well, I understand that.
Hold on. His proposal is, although it's for open recreational uses, he does have caveats in there that are specifically directed to this particular type of use. He's got some conditions, so to speak.
So if I'm not mistaken, this particular zone change would allow by special use permit as open space things, and specifically open space things, motocross, biking, and/or carting? Not golf courses or any either? Just those things?
Yeah, and that's the point that I want to bring up. I mean, if this, if, you know, we're here specifically talking about a zoning ordinance that's going to address directly a motocross park, you know, maybe we need to look at this ordinance and remove those things that would make it about specifically a motocross park, and it should be all-encompassing for other sorts of open recreation that would be beneficial, i.e. a golf course.
Your point, your point, though, is correct, because it does define, may only include the following activities.
Correct.
Madam Chairman, I don't mean to object in the sense of objecting, but there's just a clear error that everybody's making in your zoning ordinance. I would look at Section 6A. Golf courses allowed already.
Andy, one second. Okay, they have the floor right now. Let me just speak in one second to you guys. second. Do you guys all go? Because I would like to have other people speak.
Understood. So just two points in conclusion. One, I think it's clear that any proposed use under this amendment requires going to the zoning board to get a special use permit. There's very strict conditions we've put in here, and they have full authority and control over that process. Secondly, we're not looking to change anything with respect to the noise ordinance that exists already. You've heard what Mr. Wishart had to say about that. And I don't know if you've seen the various police reports or not, but those are pretty clear that there hasn't been a sound issue at this property. I don't think there is going to be one. So that's all that we have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Tights, come on. So Andy, what you're saying is golf courses are allowed.
Yeah, he's correct, yes.
Yeah, right.
And I think, first of all, for the record, again, Andrew Tights, attorney with offices at Two William Street, Providence, Rhode Island. And I'm here representing several of the neighbors principally along Deer Run, Deer Park Run Road.
Can we get the name of those neighbors, please? Can I know who they are?
Cynthia Sturgis, Mike Shinago, and some of the other people who will be here, too.
But can I have names of these some of, you know?
Those are my principal clients.
Two?
Two, yes.
Okay, thank you.
There'll be others here, but...
I want to know who you're representing.
Those are who I'm representing here specifically tonight.
Two clients?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
They can tell you more about their arrangements with the other neighbors.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to know who you're representing.
Go ahead.
So I think this goes to the heart of what we're talking about here. We have two totally separate issues. One is this, we've really got an individual spot zone change is what you're being asked to do. But they know that that won't pass. So what you've got is this overall text change. And I think this issue, which we stumbled across with Councilman Edwards' question on the golf course, actually kind of puts your heart to it. You've already got, in your ordinance, you've got certain uses which are allowed in this zone, which are much more passive and quiet, such as golf course, and things that aren't. If you look at the very next use after the golf course, and this is looking at Section 6 of the use table, and you look open recreation uses, and there's the golf course, a golf club requires a special use permit. Then you have driving tee or range, miniature golf course, or similar use operated for commercial purposes is a no in the R-80 zone. You already thought about it. You already gave it some thought, what's appropriate with the R-80 zone. Even as you deal with public parks, there are various things that are allowed or not allowed in this zone by permitted or special use, for example. Even a municipal or commercial swimming pool is just a no in the zone, because it's not appropriate. So that's already been thought of. So you're talking about adding a very intense, loud, traffic-drawing use to 60% of the town. You weren't allowing me to cross-examine Ms. Ashley Sweet, but I would suggest to you that she says she'd only found five other pieces of property, which she found by looking at the map and saying, putting in 100 acres, show me paces over 100 acres. But that's very misleading, because there are lots of this area of Tiverton where there are multiple lots. Even the applicant, he's got four different parcels, and then he mentioned some other parcel that he said wasn't even part of this. So that's not an accurate assessment of how many other opportunities out there. There are lots of areas throughout Tiverton. Basically, everything south of Bogomar Road is R-80, and there are a lot of parcels that could be aggregated to reach this 100 acres. And basically, this could be on the doorstep of almost anybody in the R-80 zone. This is not a town that's heavily developed already, that's mostly built out, such as Warren or Bristol, where there are very few large parcels. This is a town that's got concentrated development in certain areas, and then a very large area of light development. And there's a lot of areas out there that have houses or one or two houses, multiple lots, that could easily be aggregated for the 100 acres. So that's first and foremost the real danger, I think, that you're doing this as a text change without the protection. It's going to be, you know, today it's Mr. Johnson, but if he gets turned down, somebody else can come to the zoning board tomorrow, or even if he's approved, someone else can say, oh, hey, Tiverton's open for these kind of uses. Let's go find another spot that does it. And as you'll hear from some other people, it really is not a use that's compatible with this kind of area. People don't buy property in R-80 zones because they want to have to stay inside their house and not use their property and not go out in their porches for picnics because of the noise. They don't want this kind of noise. That's why they're buying them to begin with in the R-80 zone. So I think that's first and foremost, is that aspect of it. The second thing that I really have to look at is, okay, so if you think this is the only one that's going to happen, and this is a way to do it, because there's no other way that this is going to happen unless we change this text, and then Mr. Johnson can come to the zoning board and get it. So if you do look at this particular property, I think you've got a lot of problems with this particular site that you need to focus on. One of the foremost problems is, this is in the watershed, the nonquit watershed. You already have a superfund site there, and you're going to have all these uses. I didn't hear where we're going to be using electric motocross bikes. No. These are all internal combustion engines. We're going to talk about the noise, but never mind the noise. You've got all the oil and gas, and there are going to be fueling facilities, and you've got a major problem there with the pollution, even just the traffic. There was mention earlier in the meeting about the stuff done with Laurent Joubert, about the non-point source solution. And you've got all these people driving in there, and you've got all that, that you're creating all that in a watershed area. That's why this isn't meant to have these kind of heavy uses here. And the idea that it's already a gravel pit, and anything we do is better than that, is totally wrong. Yes, I was solicitor here at the time, and first of all, Mr. Johnson is incorrect to say he bought it since 1999 and implied that he owed it the whole time, because he didn't. It went into receivership, and then a different company bought it back afterwards. He happened to control both of the companies, the one that went into receivership and the one that bought it back, but those are different owners. And they did not maintain the license. Tiverton has a license requirement, and it was not maintained. And under the law of zoning, you don't abandon a use just by stopping it. But you do abandon a use by failing to act as if you want to maintain the use, including keeping a necessary license. That's one of those black-letter law things that, if you've got a nonconforming use that requires a license, you better keep that license up, or you don't have it. His own testimony...
I understand. I got cut off, though, at this point when I was trying to go over
I'll give you an option to talk after.
All right, thank you.
His own testimony was two to three times a year, which is, you know, no one even knew he was using it. But there's no legal use of this property as a gravel operation. So to be comparing that is not correct at all. This is a closed gravel pit, is its legal operation. Now, there is another operation on the property that you neglected to mention. There's a tree service that stores its trucks and vehicles there. They come in, they leave in early in the morning, they go out, they do their tree work, they come back in the evening. There's work there. That's going on without any kind of permits, but that wasn't even mentioned. But the key thing, to try to compare it to a gravel permit just doesn't make sense. Or to talk about 90 houses could go there, considering the superfund site and the wetlands and the apogrophy, and the fact that it's not anywhere near big enough, 90 houses is a perfectly wrong comparison. So I think even if you do look at the individual stuff, you'll see that this is not a good place to have it. There's a problem with the traffic. There's a problem with the noise. And it's totally inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. I know Mr. LeBeau, Councilor Boe, indicated you don't want to be a judge. But you actually do have a task here that's not to decide whether you like this zoning amendment or not. Your task, the state law says, you need to find whether this zoning amendment is in conformance with the comprehensive plan or not. And if it's not in conformance with the comprehensive plan, you cannot approve it. So you do need to look at that. And you've heard some testimony that it was in conformance with the comprehensive plan, but I think when you look at that, you will see there were a lot of cherry-picked items that were specifically pulled out just because they might fit for this. And again, there was a lot of comparison of the specific site with the assumption that it was a legal nonconforming use as an operating gravel pit, which is not. That was all the assumption behind that testimony. When you look at the comp plan, and you look at what your zoning ordinance already says about having an R-80 zone and having such a large part of the town with that kind of zone, it's not at all consistent with the comprehensive plan to put this kind of use as allowable in it, even with a special use permit. And then finally, I believe the council was submitted with this some time ago. There's a document dated February 2, 2018, addressed to the Tiverton Town Council, 343 Highland Road, from Mr. Johnson.
Okay, I brought it with me.
Mr. Edwards, okay. So I think this should be part of the record. This is something that Mr. Johnson submitted. And I think you need to look at his own words about, I know, you know, this ordinance is very bare bones. The language he uses for his use beyond the thing is, "as well as provision of training, instruction, and educational services related to such use, and incidental storage and accessory uses." So you wonder, what are these training, instruction, and educational services? What are these incidental, what are these accessory uses?
Were you saying that?
This is in his ordinance, the ordinance itself that he drafted. In the ordinance, it's under Section 6, and it's to be an asterisk for this use. And that's the first item one under that asterisk, where he says, and I'll read it again slowly, "Such use may only include the following activities: motocross, biking, and/or karting, as well as the provision of training, instruction, and educational services related to such uses, and incidental storage and accessory uses." So that's what he's telling you in the ordinance. So I say, well, what are these other instruction, training, incidental, accessory uses? And I look at his letter, and this is a document that stated February 2 in the beginning, but he included for you his April 12, 2017, letter to the town of Tiverton. Attention, Mark Russo, Town Planner. Attention, Town Council. Ladies and gentlemen, and look at the things that he's proposing there. "In addition to a 7/8 mile Supercross-style dirt track," which is what we seem to have heard about, "a 1.2-mile Grand Prix-style road course, along with an assortment of 2.5 miles of multi-configured Kart Series-style tracks and organized ATV trail and trail ride." So we're talking a 1.2-mile Grand Prix-style road course. We're talking about a paved racetrack, is what we're talking about. That's what he wants to put there. The facility, this is the last item on the first page of his April 12 item. "The facility will contain a dynamic driving school, classrooms, a skid pad, tractor-trailer and heavy equipment training school, and driver and rider racing school." Then look at the next page. It's going to have the second item, both emergency and private helicopter pads, private helicopter pads, so people can fly their helicopters in here. I'm not even going to get started on the noise with that. The fourth item, it's going to have trackside VIP exotic car garages, over 300 onsite private storage paddocks, a commercial corner of industry-retail outlets, clubhouse banquet facility, general store, trackside lounge and catering services, RV and camping accommodations, and an amphitheater. Apparently, there's an amphitheater here for concerts. I guess maybe the rock stars will fly in on their private helicopters for the amphitheater there. "There will be unlimited amenities to support facilities rental, manufacturer-proposed testing, performance car and motorcycle club functions and events, possible location for filming television programs and commercials, and race-tuning modifications and testing." You know, this sounds like a fantastic place. I think it sounds like a place I'd love to go and drive, if I could afford it. But it doesn't sound like a place that should be in the R-80 zone. This isn't supposed to be there. This should be, this should be in the industrial park, if it's going to be someplace in Tiverton, or one of the gravel banks, or right off the highway. That's where it should be. It shouldn't be in the middle of an R-80 zone where all these houses are around it. Now, I'm sure you're going to hear, well, they've asked for a lot less. They've only asked for this little thing. But first of all, I'd point out to you, it is very open-ended on what it talks about with the accessory use. And then if you look at the tabs, and these aren't numbered, so I'll have to just count. One, two, three...
They're colored, though. You can tell by color.
Four, five. Behind the second blue tab, if they're the same, which is actually...
A miracle you can see.
The fifth tab...
Looking at Addendum 3?
Addendum 2, Business Plan.
That's the purple, that's the purple tab.
Well, no, they're different, on different ones. That's why I'm, so I don't want to... So Addendum number 2, Business Plan, which is much more specific with the bikes and so forth. But again, the strategies, they're going to be marketing and selling memberships. And you haven't heard any about it today, but there's been stuff in the written stuff about how this is going to be a nonprofit operation. Yet 80% of the funding is going to the owner. They've got that there. If you look at page 23, "We're forming a formal leasing agreement. MX401 will pay 80% of its annual revenues to Camco Holdings, even though MX401 is planned to be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit." So that's what you've got. And then again, you've got the various uses that you've got here, the track PA system, the clubhouse member facilities. Again, there was some talk about the particular events. It might be four or five events a year. Well, look at it. Look at the 10-year plan with the multi-year, and they're having more and more. And by year five, you're getting expanding flagship events, rider abdication programs, seek-to-build-out clubhouse facilities, keys to success, create business agility, motorsports-themed birthday functions, corporate team building. This is what he's telling you, I'm not making this up. This is what he's presented to you in writing. This is what you're opening the door to if you approve this. I've probably spoken too long already. I would like to have some individuals speak, if I might have some of my witnesses speak on this. And then obviously, we'll both have some brief closing remarks afterwards, since you don't...
And I also have to let...
We've got a public hearing.
Yeah, we've got the public, the rest of the public, too.
Everyone else, so we're going to try to be a little briefer now from this point on.
Sure.
I've let both lawyers talk, so I'm going to try to be a little briefer here, because it's already 9 o'clock.
Okay, so I'd like Mr. James Miller to come up first.
And I'm going to just submit some things.
Madam President, before Mr. Miller speaks, I just have one question for Mr. Tights. Mr. Tights, when you mentioned the open recreational use zoning ordinances, were you in any way, shape, or form involved in actually drafting those? Like when we talk about a golf course versus not, you know, this versus that, you know what I'm saying? Were you involved?
No, no, I was not.
So you weren't at all involved in putting those together as our solicitor?
No, that was, the planning board did it with consultants.
I just wanted to make sure.
I'd just like to submit, first of all, with the record, I've got two aerial photographs taken from Google Earth, one of which is the close-up of the site. You've got a thing there, but that's not part of your... Submitting, that's all. And the second one, I don't know if you want to mark these formally as exhibits, one and two, but... This is, second one is, gives you more of a general area, which shows you that there are a lot of residences around it. When you look at the second item I've submitted, if you're going to mark it Exhibit 2 or not, you could... you can see, 691 Brain Road, you can see the area there, and you see that there's actually three major residential areas around the property, northeast and south. When you look at the close-up, it doesn't look like it's anything. It's out in the middle of nowhere. But when you look at it from a distance, you can see. Yes, it is true, there is nothing more to the west other than Fordham Brook, and there's no, there's no residences to the west. But on three sides of it, there are fairly dense residential subdivisions.
Two sides?
No, to the south as well. You're three sides. To the north, there's a subdivision.
Well, to the north, to the north is another gravel pit.
Right, but immediately to the north of that is another subdivision. To the east of it is a subdivision, and to the south of it, Sunset Drive area. I mean, the photos speak for itself. The other thing I'd just like to introduce as an exhibit, this is the, this is the town's own complaint against the operator for the illegal use of the property as a permit. And in count 20 of the complaint, the town itself has said, "The motocross activities have made noise that is disruptive to the quiet enjoyment of neighboring properties and constitute a public nuisance." So I think the Town Council can take official notice of the fact that its town policy, already taken in a court proceeding, is to consider this a public nuisance due to the noise.
Do you guys, I know, no, it's the same...
No, it's raining, ripped up the thing.
What did you do?
Took the staple out.
I needed, I needed the staple.
You wanted that back?
No, I didn't do that. I'm just messing with you.
Want another copy?
No, no, we're good.
We have plenty of copies.
Okay, all right, fine.
Maybe Ray should start a tree farm.
He's fine. All right, let's go.
Okay, so...
This poor man's standing there.
I know. So now you have to say, hand you the, give me one. You have them up there. Now, mind you, this stuff was only, we only received the reports, their reports, back on, late on Thursday afternoon, so we haven't presented this before this. But I would like, if Mr. Miller could identify himself, just tell us a little bit about your background.
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is James H. Miller. I am an acoustical consultant in addition to being a professor at the University of Rhode Island. I have been consulting in air noise since 1989, including Mario Andretti's last race. I happened to be there with a sound level meter in 1989 at Laguna Seca. So I've been doing this for quite a while. I have a doctorate from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. I have a master's degree from Stanford University. I have a bachelor's degree from Worcester Polytechnic Institute. And I've been expert witness in federal court and also in town councils and zoning boards and things like that on related issues. And I was asked by...
Before you go forward with that, I just, so your credentials actually are the last page of this report which I've handed out. They're on there, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you heard the testimony from Mr. Whitehead that Rhode Island doesn't certify engineers as far as sound and noise.
They do not.
Right. But there is, there is a professional society, the Acoustical Society of America?
Fear is fear. Now, I'm going to say the same thing to you that I said to Mr. Mano. Hey, you know what? Just get right to your testimony, go right to the bottom line, tell the council what they need to know without the Q and A, okay?
Okay, shoot, go ahead. I am a professional engineer registered in Rhode Island also. So I was asked by the, by Mr. Tights and his clients to predict the noise from racing at the site, and I'll go right to the bottom line. In certain conditions, weather conditions, which, when the wind is from the west, the neighbors to the east are going to be impacted at levels above the noise ordinance. The issues associated with the source level of these bikes is another issue I wanted to bring up. There is a commercially available motocross bike, the Honda CRF450, that has a published two-meter sound level, that means measured at two meters, of 119 dB, 119.7 dB. So it doesn't take 200 bikes to reach 119.7 dB. It's one bike. Depends on the bikes. The AMA, American Motorcyclist Association, limit for racing bikes is 113 dB, so much higher than what was mentioned in the report earlier. So I'll get right to the bottom line. Once you have more than two or three bikes racing, their going, their noise is going to impact the neighbors to the east almost directly. So how's that for short?
That's perfect, but it doesn't go along with what the police report said. None of the police reports, they were there 13 times, and we didn't hear any, so we got nothing.
Yeah, but...
Race days.
So can I try to answer, maybe, I'm not familiar with those police reports. I've read them, I don't know anything about them, but wind is, is a controlling factor for this. The wind refracts.
Can you, can you explain this, because I'm sure this part, this part of your...
Sure.
I have no idea what I'm looking at.
Oh, okay, no problem, no problem. So the wind controls where the sound goes, and it refracts, bends the wind down, bends the sound down. And what I included in Figure 5 of my report is a wind rose, which is just a statistical distribution of wind. I happened to pick TF Green because it had the best data. And there is a standard in acoustics that when sound is within 45 degrees of where the sound's going, you get lots of increase. And what, what that shows is, is that 30% of the time, the wind is from the west. Everybody knows sort of, know they have to sail or anything like that. And other times, it's from the southwest, and southwest, southwest. So it just could have been, possibly, that the sound, it could have been a wind from the wrong direction.
I'm sorry, I just, never mind, go ahead.
That's okay. Have I helped with that answer?
That's exactly what I was going to do.
All right.
I think, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, are we going way off here? Isn't the question on whether or not we want to turn this, we want to allow this in an R-80, isn't that the question? That is the question.
It's a zoning ordinance, and it's devolving into whether or not it's appropriate for this particular site.
And that's not really what we're here for, in a way.
Well, if, if this is approved, it's going to go, it's going to...
Go for a special use permit in the borough.
It's going to go for a special use permit. But it's also going to go to zoning board, but it's also, you know, for other, other parcels, too.
Absolutely, other land in this town.
Correct.
I know.
And if I may, let me just ask Mr. Miller to talk about the, just the question of the different bikes and the muffled and the unmuffled, because you hit that very quickly. But if you could explain the difference, why you think there was a difference between you and what the other engineer said?
Sure, so it has to do with, with how loud the bikes are, and some commercial bikes are much louder than what was described earlier. And if those, and even the American Motorcyclist Association 113 dB A limit is, is, is much, much higher than was, was discussed earlier. So when you include reasonable levels, and I didn't go to 113, I just said I'll have a go to 103, that's what I use to produce the predictions that once you get more than two or three bikes, that the neighbors to the east are impacted at the property line.
Thank you.
No, I, nothing, you have the report here. I would ask, next, Mr. Alan Booth.
Well, it's a fact. It's blown away from all the houses that are complaining. So that's, that's out the window.
More paper? More paper? Put the record. So, Mr. Booth, just to clarify, you've got your credentials at the back of this report as well?
I do.
And if you could just tell the board very briefly about your credentials and tell them about this, tell them about your thoughts on this site.
My name's Alan Booth. I'm a certified general appraiser. I'm a certified assessor. I was the assessor in Tiverton at one time. I was a Tiverton resident at one time. I actually, in part of my life, drove an oil truck to Humphrey Oil and probably drove up and down every single street in Tiverton.
How long ago?
How long ago? I think I drove for Humphrey 1980 and 81.
Okay.
I'm an old guy. Sorry.
No, 85. I was born 85.
Okay. I'm just, I'm familiar with Tiverton. So we were asked about the, the possible effect on value of real estate with this project. And I understand that it could impact about 60% of the city, the town of Tiverton. And Mr. Bernard is absolutely correct, we don't have a crystal ball, and I can't give you a number. But I will tell you that in my experience, value and, and desirability are subjective to the potential buyer, not to the current owner. They, they may or may not end up with lower values, but it's the marketability of the property after something happens. My experience in Tiverton is it's rural. People buy houses in Tiverton because they want that rural nature. They want to be able to let their children ride their bicycles on streets that aren't extremely trafficked. They want to be able to walk their dogs, enjoy the smell of the woods. It is our belief that if this becomes a commercial property, that Brayton Road will experience considerably more traffic. The sound experts have said that there may be noise from the, I'm not a sound expert, there may be noise from the, these activities. I certainly think that, that traffic coming to the facility, as opposed to the normal traffic on Brayton Road, but if you have an end of event, and you've got 100 dirt bikes, you've got 100 trucks with trailers, spectators, and things like that, that will turn Brayton Road into a congested road for those activities. And that has, if you, if you look at, there are a lot of studies have been done where roads have been, been turned into very active roads, it impacts the saleability of the property, which results in a lower value. So it's very possible that if this facility was turned into a full-blown, as Mr. Tights described, recreational mecca, it would affect the residential property in the neighborhood.
I don't have anything else to add. I'm trying to, trying to keep it short, and I don't want to allow time for the next person, too.
All right, thank you.
Unless you have questions.
Did anyone have questions? I apologize.
General questions, well.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to call Mr. Vin Murray next, and I've got a couple of handouts for you.
I thought we were supposed to have all this stuff before I gave you...
I thought we were supposed to have all this stuff before.
This is...
Like, I feel like I'm winning a call.
Yeah, me too. I've got way too much paper.
That's what happens with a public hearing.
Yeah, but we're supposed to have this beforehand. I'm looking at stuff right now, and you're going to want me to make a decision on a mountain of paperwork. Mountain. I can't read this in a week, so this is not...
And it would be seen by me at 5:00 on Thursday.
Well, that's not my problem. My problem is I'm supposed to have it in time so I can go over this stuff and make an educated decision, so.
Obviously, this decision may not be made this evening because there's way too much coming towards us, and it's only fair, because we don't have any time to look at this.
So the first thing you're getting is just Mr. Murray's credentials, and the second thing you're getting, you don't have to worry about reading this because you've already seen this, the planning board, this was attached to what the planning board sent you in, on January 10th, they said they were enclosing Mr. Murray's report from, that he had presented to the planning board, which is dated January 9th. So, but I didn't see it anywhere on the record. It's not on the clerk base, so I just want to make sure you have it in the record. You've already seen this or should have seen it because it went to you. This was his report to the planning board.
Joe is not getting any of this, by the way. Is it enough?
And Joe's like, I don't care.
So Joe doesn't really get enough.
I'm not going to make the decision. I don't get it.
Well, we may make the decision tonight, so you may...
Yes, well, I will.
Yeah. All right, so this is what I'm going to do. We're going to hear from this gentleman, and then I'm going to open the hearing up.
Okay, so let me just, let me give you the last item here, too. There's more? There's one more, which is Jay's thing, and I want to make sure that, because this is the key. This is the comprehensive permit issue. So Mr. Murray, tell them a little bit about your background.
I have been a comprehensive planning and land use planner in the state for more than 30 years. I worked for four different communities in the state, most recently, Town of South Kingston for 20 years. I retired as their planning director in January of 2017, and since I've been doing the odd consulting jobs on a part-time basis, just to lend some structure to my day and to continue in the profession. I too hold a master's degree in community planning from the University of Rhode Island and a bachelor's degree from URI as well, going back a fair amount of time, so.
And Mr. Murray, South Kingston is not so dissimilar from Tiverton?
Are we doing Q and A again?
No, I just want him to tell about the rural nature. Tell them about your experience dealing with commercial uses in rural areas.
Andy, Andy, no. Get right to it. That's what we did with the, that's what we did with the applicant.
No, this isn't a normal public, this isn't my usual public hearing. This is more of a...
Just get right to it.
Shall I go?
Sure.
As Attorney Tights mentioned, I was before the planning board, I'm the 9th of January, and I was there to comment on the proposal and how it comported with the state enabling statutes for, for planning and zoning, and also for the Tiverton comprehensive plan, looking ahead and planning together that, as revised 2009. At that time, the application was permitted by right in the R-80 zoning district. The, what's it, the other open commercial, and I would emphasize "commercial" as recreation use in the R-80 zoning district. My opinion was that the application was not consistent with the Tiverton comp plan, and as such, could not be supported under the requirements of the Rhode Island zoning enabling statute. At the meeting, other issues were raised concerning the history of the particular property that we spoke about tonight, nuisance issues relating to noise and dust, environmental issues, Mr. Tights mentioned the watershed overlay district, and general negative impacts to the R-80 zoning district. The planning board voted to send a letter to the town council in strong opposition to the proposed amendments, and from their minutes, it was indicated that my report dated January the 9th would be appended there, too, and I know Mr. Tights just distributed. Now, I would note for the record that my findings and opinions detailed in that initial report remain valid despite the application being revised. I would also note that the planning board's input in this matter is, is very key because under the state law, local planning boards are assigned with the responsibility to put together the comprehensive plan. So I know nobody is an expert, per se, but I would say the local planning boards are expert in the, the content and interpretation of their own plan document, which articulates a desired future arrangement of land uses for a community. The new application, you know, moves to a special use permit basis for going forward, and also, and again, for the other open commercial recreation uses. It is a general text amendment, as was mentioned earlier. A passage of it could open up, you know, other areas of the town for such consideration. I would tell you that from the comp plan, there's more than 10,000 acres in Tiverton. More than half of the community is under that zoning district. So I know you know that, but I just, it's actually 10,158 acres in the town is zoned R-80. Now, the state enabling statute for zoning ordinance requires that local ordinances detail the criteria of issues to classes of special use permits that shall be in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. The proposed criteria that this applicant articulates in their revised application, in my opinion, are tailored, tailored to their interests or vaguely stated overall. It remains my professional opinion that these amendments are not consistent with or supported by the comp plan. In addition to the other criteria proposed by this application, Tiverton zoning ordinance contains a... contains, uh, and Ms. Sweet mentioned these, uh, six criteria that are applied to all special use permits in the current ordinance. Among those are that the, the use, special use would be compatible with the neigh, with neighboring land use and not adverse, adversely affect the general character of the area and that the use won't create nuisance conditions in the neighborhood and the use will be compatible with the comprehensive community plan of the town of Tiverton. Although the application is filed as a general text amendment, it's commonly known that it's, it's, it's intended to be of benefits to a specific parcel. Um, and, um, actually, I would, um, mention, and Mr. Tights had passed out, you know, this, uh, use of the premises, um, the Johnson Campco property was, uh, subject of a complaint filed in the Rhode Island Superior Court in two thousand and seventeen and the issuance of a notice of violation by the zoning officer. Um, Mr. Tights also mentioned that the, um, the town's complaint, uh, characterized the use of the property as a nuisance and that it resulted in the disruption of the quiet enjoyment of other Tiverton property owners. Acceptance of the proposed amendments would provide a path to essentially cure past violations on these parcels and allow for future legalization for a motocross usage on the premises owned by the applicants. I also add the opportunity, um, over the weekend, to take a, a quick review of Ms. Sweet's report and I just have a couple of brief comments in that. I would say that the assertion that the application is consistent with the Tiverton comp plan rests upon what I would characterize as a gymnastic cherry picking of plan elements and is simply not supported by the thematic tenor of the document, particularly the land use element. The, the land use element contains a future land use map, which is almost, and it mirrors the zoning ordinance. That, that, this element designates the desired future land area of this quadrant of the community for residential agricultural open space uses and that's what supports the R-80 zoning applicable. The R-80 zoning district in the ordinance is described as, "This district contains areas of the town which are comprised of act, composed of agricultural uses, low density residential areas and certain open spaces for its development at a rate at or lower than one dwelling unit per eight, eighty thousand square feet is considered appropriate." The R-80 district consists of the residential portions of the entire area of Tiverton south of Bulgarmash Road. A commercial recreation use in this district is inherently in conflict with the comprehensive plan designation for this area. The report also discusses other non-conforming uses present in this vicinity. I, I would characterize that as irrelevant to the consideration of this application. Non-conforming uses which predate zoning can continue in their current state and intensity, but if changed, they would be required to be changed in conformity with the ordinance. Uh, the comprehensive plan future land use designation for this vicinity would promote conversion, you know, to residential uses or a golf course or some other such that's permitted in the current ordinance. The, I will also, the, the report just talks about the motocross usage not requiring a fee from participants. I would also characterize this as irrelevant to the consideration of this matter. It is because the proposal would establish an activity that is commercial in character in the R-80 zoning district. It is also noteworthy that this use code, uh, other open commercial recreation uses is not permitted in any residential zoning district in the town of Tiverton. Such use may only be preceded by special use permit in the village commercial or highway commercial districts. Uh, the proposal, I would also say, would not meet the general criteria for special use permits under the Tiverton zoning ordinance. It also, you know, this, this, uh, the assertion that it would is contradicted by the town's issuance of a violation notice for past activities on the premises and the court filing, which labeled the, the use a nuisance. And, you know, and so I would, in summary, based on, uh, my research and past testimony on this and testimony this evening, my position and opinion that the application, even as revised, would, would, is poorly conceived, vague, and any benefit might accrue would be, were to be successful, would only go to the owner or operator of such a facility. The application is not supported by or consistent with the Tiverton comprehensive plan and that, and to reiterate, that position is underscored by the planning board's correspondence to the town council on this matter. As such, I would respectfully recommend the town council reject this application as is contrary to the overall community interests and aspirations as detailed in the town's comprehensive community plan and zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless you have any questions of me, I'll hold my comments till later.
Madam President, I just have one, um, one item I think that we should mention before we get to the public hearing, that, you know, there really are two separate issues here. Whether or not this property becomes a motocross piece of property is not what we're here talking about. We're talking about the zoning amendment. So hopefully, when we do receive public comment, it will confine itself to the zoning amendment and not to specifics about this particular piece of property because this would touch other properties.
Well, I don't know if we can stop that, though.
I would just encourage the members of the public who are here because.
I can't stop them from talking about motocross because that's what this has all been about.
We can give them two minutes. About this specific property.
Well, I will give them two minutes apiece.
Are you on time?
Yep.
The human mind can take fifty minutes. We've been on this for an hour and a half. Yeah, I'll time you.
I'm, I'm almost thinking of taking a brief recess so that we can all.
I just had, I couldn't go anymore. This guy gives forty-five minutes and we're going to get to. I'm impressed.
Well, they, Mr. Johnson's attorney also got forty-five minutes, so, um, yeah, that's what's going to happen.
You indicated I could have a brief rebuttal to that, just on the issue of this, this insinuation.
Mike, Mike, tell you what. Why don't you wrap up at the end so the public can get a chance to speak?
Okay, thank you.
Well, in the absence of, uh, the President, um, I guess we will now open the public hearing, so anybody wishing to speak on the topic? Any members of the public wishing to speak? Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. If, uh, you could please just state your name and address for the record.
I'll just, uh, my name is Barbara Martin. I live at three thirteen Neck Road. And I'll stick with the ordinance. It probably will be repetitive because a lot of points were made, but, um, let me see. As far as the use, uses that are being, um, okay, I've, I've gotten this written down, so let me just, okay. I counted three properties. I may be wrong, um, that would qualify under this change. Two of those are also in the Nonquit Pond watershed overlay, uh, just so you would know. I don't know the other, uh, I can't address, uh, aggregating, uh, properties or the other two that, um, were mentioned. So such uses may, uh, okay, I'm not going to talk about that. Okay, the incidental storage. Um, that, if it's not defined what incidental storage is, it could be anything and no limits as to how much it would be. The accessory uses, if that's not defined, um, I put, when I wrote this this afternoon, it could be entertainment, retail sales, food. I had no idea about the, uh, future plans of this, but now if you're not just thinking of this parcel, now you're thinking of four, four parcels that this could happen on? Um, okay. Let me see. There were, um, an article, let's see, sections, okay. Travel trailers, pickup campers, coaches, motorized vehicles, tent trailers, boats. All, all of these would now be, um, allowable with no stipulation as to how many could be stored on this property. It would just be as a right of way. That's not me. Um, so, and this, this is not just for this property. Now, this is written into your ordinance, so it's, it's a right for anyone. Um, okay. The hours of operation, now that really got me because the hours of operation were ten AM to six, Monday through Saturday, twelve PM to five on Sundays. So this could be open seven days a week. Uh, the months of operation would be, um, let's see, it was March thirteenth to November twentieth, so that's eight and a half, uh, months of the year. So that's pretty much all the time. Um, and when you consider that, um, there could be events, I'll, I'll get down there. Let's see, okay. There shall be adequate facilities for sanitation. Okay, there's no sewer in an R-80. Um, and, uh, and this property is in the Nonquit Pond watershed. It's a drinking water supply. So if you have a major event and you have hundreds of people there, you, how are you going to address that? Um, okay. In, uh, if, an event is held at the subject property where the attendance is expected to exceed one hundred, the owner of the property, uh, shall notify the Tiverton Police Chief, who shall have the right to require a traffic detail, who would be employed by the owner to control the flow of traffic. Okay, so just in that wording alone, this would allow events, doesn't say how many, of over a hundred, uh, people, um, and it doesn't say how many you could have during the eight and a half months. It's just open-ended and now this is cooked right into your ordinance. Um, okay. Uh, that any such operation shall have adequate water supply for emergency fire protection. There is no public water down there, uh, no, no hydrants. So you'd have to be putting a fire out with well water. I don't know how you would do that and it doesn't address that.
All right, I've given you three minutes, so wrap it up, please.
Okay, okay. Um, that's kind of it, except there, there were mention of hazardous spills, um, and that they would be cleaned up. Uh, who, who is going to be monitoring that? It would be the owners of the town to monitor that, if there were any, and it's in a drinking water supply.
Madam President, if, um.
Thank you.
If I could just request from, uh, Ms. Martin, since you have written copies, if you want to submit your full written copies, maybe you can get it to the clerk.
I think it's all in our handwriting now.
Uh, I would have to make copies of it, but I have it here.
Okay, I was, the clerk, you might be able to get copies.
Good evening, Honorable Town Council. My name's Alan Romella from forty-four Basswood Drive and by way of introduction, I met Raymond Johnson about a year and a half ago and have helped him over that time period, um, seek his plight before you today. And to stick to the ordinance piece, I want to just say one thing and it's really important to highlight. He's not looking to change any of the ordinances in place that exist today that are in place. The sound ordinances are going to be the same, everything. That's all he's asking for is a chance to bring forth his proposal to the planning board and get his chance there. That's all we're asking for today. No changes.
Thank you. Anyone else from, um, anyone else from the public? Why don't you come too, so that you can get in line, so, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tom McQueen, eighty Maple Drive.
Hi, Tom.
I'm a lifelong Tiverton resident, grew up in North Tiverton. My wife and I bought land on Maple Drive, two thousand and five. Quiet neighborhood, dead-end street, woods, birds. Go outside now on a weekend, all you can hear is revving motors. I can hear it in my house with the windows closed. I'd advise against it.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, I'm Mike Shinago. I own, uh, the House Thirty-five Deer Run Road and what I want to do is, uh, very similar to this gentleman, I, except I bought in two thousand and six and, uh, I can hear it inside my house with the windows closed as well. There's a passage that, uh, is on the MX six ninety-one Facebook site from about a year ago, twelve April, that I want to read, that MX six ninety-one, and I will provide this to you. It's on, some gentleman asks, "Do you have any info on this track, pay and ride, parking hour rules, the requirements, et cetera?" And the answer, one of the answers back from MX six ninety-one on the Facebook site is eleven to four-thirty Saturday, twelve noon to four o'clock Sunday. As the weather gets warmer, we will knock off earlier to provide some relief for our neighbors to enjoy their backyard barbecue and quiet summer evenings." Unquote. Their writing. Please don't pass this.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? I'll give you, I'll give you two and a half minutes.
My name is Ed Meters. I live on Cornell Road, about a half a mile from Ray Johnson's property. I've lived there all my life. Get down to the nuts and bolts of this. I don't care about the ordinances. People should be able to, whoever here, you people should be able to change the ordinance to do what's right. All of these kids in town that have dirt bikes, ATVs, where are they supposed to ride them? I could tell you where they're riding them. On private property, on the roads. I listened to it all weekend long, all summer long. The cops can't always be there to catch them. And mostly, they're good kids. You talk to them, they're respectful, they're good kids, but they're kids. They need some place to be able to have this fun and do this thing or they're going to be like they are now, on the roads, in the woods during hunting season. I see them there all the time. You're in there deer hunting? Here they come. They don't have a clue. I think it's a good thing. You know, you've got to break an egg to make an omelet. Some people are going to like it, some people ain't. I like it. I think it's a good idea. Take the kids off the road, give them something to do. I think it's good all the way around. I don't see no bad part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Clapping will take more than two minutes.
Hi, Council. I'm Gary Kier from Gary Street and Trail. I have a small business in the town and I've seen things, uh, how can I say it? Escalate in the riding of motorcycles and off-road things. And I get kids from Quill River, they ride on the streets, they come up, up the streets and I'm like, I say, "No, you guys can't do this. This is not looking good for anybody that rides motorcycles." I tell them, "There's going to be a place in Tiverton, maybe, that you guys can go." "Okay, we would like that. We would like that very much." I said, "I'd keep you guys off the streets." And it's, it'll be better for business also because people have places to ride. It'd make everybody happier in the town because you can all have a business. I'm not just the only one.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Sturgis. I live on Deer Run Road. Dirt bike riding is a loud, obnoxious activity. It's no one's fault. It's just the way the bikes are made. There's a trade-off for power. You get noise instead. I can hear the activity inside my house and I live a quarter of a mile from the site. Above and beyond this site-specific proposal, I want to say that I don't believe that the R-80 zone is where this activity belongs. I think it's a great idea, too. I look at Ray's plans and I get excited about what he's doing as well, but not in the R-80 zone where the roads can't support the traffic, where there's no water and sewer. It's, it, the environmental impact is, is going to be amazing. The, most of the R-80 zone is wetlands. Now, we're talking about people's public water source overlay districts being impacted by this development. The R-80 zone is the wrong place for this to go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, guys. My name is Dr. Laura Mercurio. Um, I work at Hasbro Children's Hospital as a pediatric or emergency medicine physician and I should probably be the last person standing up here in a purple shirt. I pick up, uh, pieces of people and pieces of children and I am one of those people that stand before you to say, "These kids need a safe place to ride. I am tired of seeing them come to my ER. I am tired of seeing them get in confrontations with people who are meant to protect this town, the police officers, the EMS. I find them and I see them missing lots of things, both emotionally and physically. They need a safe space. This is the type of place. It is infant, it is in its infancy, yes, I completely agree." And I, I grew up in the woods. I grew up in the quiet. I totally get what it's like because I remember being a little kid and my dad being upset about a dirt biker and I, I can hear you and I hear you loud and clear, but I, I also want you guys to know from the bottom of my heart, this group of people, we want to work with your community. We're so excited to be a part of it and grow with it and I just want to take the medical perspective and say, "This really needs to happen and I really hope that you guys can be the home for this." Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Hello. I'm Beth Hears Close. I live on 129 Deer Run Road. For 19 years, we lived on, in North Tiverton. And we had, every window we looked out of, there was another house. We saved, we worked hard. Now we're on Deer Run, thrilled. But now there's this noise. You buy extra land so you can have peace, you can have quiet. I don't mind dirt bike riding, any of that, but not where we are. There needs to be a place, but it's not over there. I mean, in my heyday, dirt bike riding, four-wheeling, it's awesome, no question about it. But I didn't save and work hard to be over here now and hear that all day. I work 2:00 AM, 7:00 AM, get home, hear it. My husband's home all day, he works from home, we hear it. And I mean, it's like having a humongous fly in your ear all day long. And it's ridiculous. But thank you.
Thank you.
I want to ask you a refrain from the local. Thank you.
Hi, Richard Close, also Deer Run Road. That was my wife. Like she said, we just moved and at first, you don't know what's going on, and then you start to hear the noises. And it's like, okay, somebody's riding their dirt bike, and that's a little annoying because of the noise. But then it becomes more often, and you're hearing it over and over again. And it's just something that you didn't expect, that when you purchased this property, that you would hear every day, or not every day, but on a regular basis. And then on top of that, like they've said before, if this becomes switched into where it's more commercial and more people are there, again, the roads are just going to be impacted. I mean, they're narrow enough as it is, so then you add into the extra traffic. And it's also a cause for, a chance for more accidents, people running into each other, whatever. So I'd say, please, keep it somewhere else, not in the R-80s.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jonathan Willett. You seen a lot of people wearing purple shirts tonight?
I just need your address.
75 Woodward Avenue, Seacon, Mass.
Thank you.
See a lot of purple shirts tonight? I was here a few months back, trying to support Ray, and there was a group of people here, Project Purple. And it resonated with me, because everybody on the council was wearing the purple shirt, and it was showing, you know, a sign of solidarity. And it made me think about what we were trying to do. And this whole idea of just send came out of what we're seeing here. It's tough to try to create a location like this, and it's tough to try to give kids a structured experience, where safely and legally, they can be introduced to motorsports and mentors. Not everybody plays football, not everybody plays golf, not everybody plays hockey. You need more than just one way to grow. And this area, all of Southeastern New England, has always been a place where motorsports, power sports, has tried to exist, and in the past 20, 30 years, time after time, location's been taken away. And what you've seen is people go and ride illegally. So the illegal riding problem that we have in Fall River, and New Bedford, and Providence, everywhere over the CV, you see it. It's because there aren't safe legal places to go. And it's about kids, it's about the youth, it's about the young adults, it's about pathways to prosperity, and not shutting down people's hope, their dreams, or ability to grow in the way that they need to grow. Because I'll tell you, a noise that's insufferably loud is the noise of income and wealth inequality, and knowing that others can enjoy what they want, because they have the place to do it themselves, like a big enough piece of property where you can ride in back of your own house. And not be able to do that. So that's it, that's me.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'm Gail Lawrence, and I live at 108 Long Bastaway in the southern part of town. And I've been trying to understand this proposal, and my concern really is that it is too far-reaching, because it does impact all of the R-80s in our town. And I know that there is an R-80 that's currently agricultural, and it's in just north of Amicable Church, in that vicinity, near the historic cemetery. And I do enjoy listening to the kids at the town farm. I live down very near the marsh, and I love hearing them yell and cheer, and I know there's a lot of traffic there. In fact, I usually have to wait quite a while to get off out of my neighborhood. And I'm just trying to look forward and think about, if that farm had an R-80 designation and someone came and said, "We'd like to put another motocross in this area," you know, what are the mechanisms to be forward-thinking and protective of what we've put down in our comprehensive plan for R-80 areas? And I think that's an important consideration for the council, and this is sort of a crossroads. I appreciate the validity of what these people are saying, but you do have a serious question to weigh. And perhaps there are ways to work with them, but not to make it a blanket change for the town. So I'm not a noise expert, but when I looked up on helpless noise on the internet, a motorcycle, one motorcycle was 100 dB. And that seemed like that was a very loud sound, so I YouTube'd it. And I listened to it for a little while, and I appreciate what the neighbors are saying, because, you know, you do buy property with the hope of having a quiet place to live, or you buy it where there's a lot of action, because that's not your priority. So I wish you would think long and hard about this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Chris Souza, 394 Brayton Road. I'm a third of a mile north of the gravel pit, okay? The last year has been quiet, not a lot of bikes been in there. But before that, I can't sit inside my house without hearing dirt bikes. So if they expand it again and it gets large, okay, that's all I'm going to hear. I've been there since 1974. I've got 56 and a half acres. My neighbor just got her property up for sale, and it's almost 50 acres. If I combine the two, or if somebody wants to buy the two here, they'll have 100 acres there. And if this goes through, I will put my property up for sale, because I don't have a peace of mind all day on a farm. In the gravel pits, the noise is different, okay? It can run all day and it don't bother you. But the sound of the dirt bikes and everything else, it just goes right through you. Okay, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Folks. Folks. Thank you.
Eugene Jason, 4561 Main Road. I was here before, talking about, behalf of Mr. Johnson. My last comment was that I wished that everything wouldn't be an instant no. And I commend you that. It's not an instant no, they're working, you're working on it, it's weighing the decision, and I appreciate that. One thing I want, two little things I want to say is, I've heard many times tonight about the watershed area, gasoline and oil spilling, and not being able to, not having sewer or proper water to put out a fire. All those things are moot points. I can't think of a single place in the nation where you're allowed to dump oil on the ground. That's something that just comes along with the care ship, the caring and the ownership of the property. And if oil was dumped on the ground, there would be fines and cleanup and all the other things that come along with it. If people have sewer, there's such things as portageons, and there's tanker trucks that take the sewer away. And there's proper sewer systems that are, everybody knows the cost of them, they're put everywhere. So that's a moot point also. And so all these things about, in the fire department, there's many places that need fire suppression, they build ponds, they have pumping stations, they have pressurized tanks, there's all sorts of ways to remediate fire, even though there's no fire hydrants in the street. They're all moot and pretty silly points to bring up. That's all that I have to say.
Thank you. Next.
How are you? My name's John Healan. Just a couple of quick points I wanted to make. So I guess twofold. One, as a father of a nine-year-old who rides a dirt bike, so my son and I ride, so we would be, you know, we'd be customers of Ray's. We'd be coming here and spending money in the town, and filling up the tank with gas, buying parts in town, whatever it might be. So as a rider and as a father, I just kind of wanted to quickly put a, I guess, a face to the customer that'd be coming to spend money in town here, who I probably otherwise wouldn't be becoming. And twofold, I also work in the motocross industry. I work for a company called Fox Racing, which is one of the bigger equipment manufacturers, apparel manufacturers within the motocross industry. I have a title of National Sales Manager, so I travel around quite a bit, I go to a lot of tracks, I go to a decent amount of meetings like this, town meetings, people want to put in a spot to ride, a lot of pros and cons. And that, you know, there's obviously a few sticking points that come up. The noise thing is obviously a big one. There are all sorts of remedies around that. There are, I've been to meetings just like this, and there's silencers, there's modifications, there's things that can be made to address the noise. There are certain spots where you go, and, you know, you can't ride your bike there if it doesn't have a certified, a very specific muffler, a very specific silencer, a very specific spark arrestor. In California, for instance, where the industry's a lot bigger, there's various criteria your bike have to have in order to ride there. And if you don't, you can't go. There's, whether, like I said, mufflers or different precautions that can be put in place. So it's a big gray area, I just, I hear a lot about the noise, and I get it, too. I live in a spot where kids ride in the woods across the street, and it's loud. I would almost prefer if it were turned into a sanctioned riding area, where they could say, "Okay, you can ride here, but you have to have a silencer. My muffler is a silencer, costs a couple hundred bucks." But it's almost if you embrace it and then put some, I guess, restrictions, as much as no one would want that as a rider, but if that's the difference between being able to ride somewhere and not, I think everyone would collectively want to go with that unanimously. And it does make a difference. So there's a big gray area in there for what it's worth.
John, what's your address, by the way?
Gray Center, Sports Smith.
Thank you.
My name's Kyle Affave, 313 Albion Road in Lincoln, Rhode Island. I myself am a certified motorcycle technician. I work on bikes all day, every day, and I've been doing it for a very long time. I think what Ray is trying to do here is very admirable, and all he's doing is asking for a chance. Now, going from what John said, there are several different ways to make a bike quieter and everything like that. Everyone, like, if you race, you would ideally like peak performance, makes a bike louder. But Rhode Island's actually the only state that doesn't have a sanctioned recreational area for dirt bike and recreational vehicles. The other states, they limit what you can ride with and what you go there with. If you go to like an AMA race, stuff like that, they use the decibel beener. If you are above that, you can't ride. And that's exactly what John's saying. There are different types of mufflers, there are even things that you can put over your muffler. And that quiets the bike and makes it much, a great difference in sound. As far as like the other issues, I mean, people are going to be for it, people are going to be against it, but it is, it would be a good place to have a nice, safe environment to be able to ride. And it would be the only place in Rhode Island. Now, it would be like a precedent almost, but all we're looking for, we're not the ones riding on the street, we're not the ones breaking the law and everything. We're here for respect, and we're here to at least advance it a little bit. And we're just asking for a little bit of recognition to be here and at least move a step forward. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question before you go?
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes. How far, how many decibels can you drop with the?
You can drop a little over 10. Like, it really depends what you're riding. Like, if you're riding, if you have a stock muffler, you can take the baffle out of it. It makes it very loud, and it also produces sparks. So you can't ride in national forests, you can't ride in certain areas like that. So if you have a stock bike, it's significantly quieter than an aftermarket. But there are slip-on pieces that do go over the muffler, and if you do some research, they can, it's about 11 decibels and stuff like that. And if everyone there is using it and everything like that, that significantly reduces the noise. And it being inside a gravel pit, that's acting as a buffer as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi. My name is Cindy McQueen. I live on 80 Maple Drive. My husband spoke earlier. I've been a Tiverton resident since 1996, and we moved to South Tiverton on Maple Drive to have more space and to have quiet, open area. Currently, the dirt bikes are there every weekend. Being outside is difficult, you know, to spend some time outside with the kids. I appreciate all the noise regulations that they say could happen, but who would enforce that? Who would be standing there at the gate saying, "You can only ride if you have this kind of silencer or that kind of silencer"? Oil spills, no, nobody's allowed to spill oil, but it happens, and it has to be reported. Who's going to be the one making sure they report it? I'm an environmental chemist. I see oil spills every day. I see forensics done on oil spills to figure out where it came from. Oil travels. It's going to go through the water. It's going to end up in my well. This is not the place for a dirt bike.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Okay.
Can I speak to a few points?
Well, Ray, you're part of the public, and you have two minutes. Ready?
Okay.
No, I'm kidding.
The first point is on the watershed overlay district. Oh, that's the second point. The first point is on the watershed overlay district, and if we look at this, this layout, as you can see, this was designed by an architect. This is Randy Waterman, Waterman Associates. They're a known, large architectural firm. Mr. Waterman is a wetlands expert. He's walked this property, we've both walked it together. I'm in the environmental business. We've taken into consideration and added enough buffers and enough ponds for detention areas. And as far as spills, I mean, Mrs. McQueen speaks about spills and being a chemist. If you're in that industry, you know that a recordable quantity is five gallons. I don't know any motorcycle that carries five gallons. You would have to have.
You have to trust me. You're going to look at us.
Okay. You don't, no. Five gallons, you would have to have a substantial spill of five gallons. That would have to be, you know, at least 50 bikes at once to generate that amount of a spill. We have existed as a private property, riding on that property, like I said, for, you know, since I was eight years old. And since 2009, when we built this track, we've ridden, had quite a few rides there. People come and ride all the time. So far, we have not shown any evidence of violating any sound ordinances. And I do understand that, okay, we're not violating the ordinance, and it is, okay, you can hear it, but we are just asking for a chance and some way to mitigate that noise issue with either brimming or silencers, and even the hours of limitation. I have put out information where I'm leaving myself accessible, where my neighbors can contact me and say, "Okay, Ray, this weekend, we're hosting a wedding in our yard." You'd think maybe, absolutely, you're my neighbor, I'm going to accommodate that. The other point is, we're an existing grandfathered gravel pit. That crusher runs at 119 decibels. I've been running that crusher there since 1990, since 96.
Ray, I don't want to go there, because there's a lot of things that we shouldn't be.
The third thing?
That is not a gravel pit anymore. Okay, so, go ahead.
That's for judges to decide. The second thing on that is, you yourself were witness to an event. I think we had that discussion on this, the last time we hosted an event, the police were there, they took sound tests over and over and over. They were doing it at the property line of Mr. Shinago, out at the end of Deer Run Road. We never went above that posted ordinance, we never violated. They never came in and issued to shut us down.
Right, and now that you brought up I was there, you're absolutely right. As far as the noise ordinance, you didn't go above it, but let me tell you, if I lived in that neighborhood, that would have been annoying. I heard that noise, I was standing there for a good half hour, I came back later. So even though you don't go over noise ordinance, I can understand why these people don't like it. I wouldn't like it either. It's loud, Ray. It might not be.
To some people, it is offensive. To some people, it is not.
It is loud, and, you know, I'm not, you brought up that I was there, yes, I was there, and I heard it, and I came back and forth to hear it. And if I lived in that neighborhood, I wouldn't like it, I'll be honest with you. So you're the one that brought it up, and I was there. And just because it's not above the noise ordinance, doesn't mean that it's not a nuisance.
Well, in that context, it's not above the ordinance.
What is that?
This is a sound meter. We have one, we do test. This is a sound meter. We have one. We do test. My neighbors have a landscaper come in and do their lawn. They exit the truck with three or four backpack blowers and a few weed whackers. They are exceeding the same decibel levels. There's not much difference between a landscape company coming in and doing yard work than what admits from the pit. It's 1,800 feet plus with a long, buffeted driveway and lots of trees and lots of forest buffer. And like I said, there are ways to mitigate this. We've done this with no control, without implementing anything, and still haven't violated. Now, we're asking to get permission and implement strict restrictions, which would make it better. That's all we're asking for.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public besides the two lawyers? No, no, and I'm asking that for a reason, because I think that, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but maybe we should continue this hearing now. I let it go on because people from the public came here. But I don't know if you all feel you can make a decision this evening, or if you'd like to continue it to another hearing. I'm asking the town council first.
If I may, under Section 45-24-51, the city of town council shall render a decision on any amendment to a zoning ordinance within 45 days after the date of the completion of the public hearing. And, you know, the applicant can consent to a further continuance after that.
But, I mean, we just got, it is not fair to us to make a decision by getting all this added material. Joe didn't even get it all. And if you want us to weigh our decision on what you gave us tonight, I don't think that we can do that. Trish, I know you want to say something.
I think the...
Unless someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion with the town.
Second.
Hey, may we both be heard just before you vote on this?
I would rather not hear you.
Not true.
I don't care if it's true. I'm tired of it.
Well, I know, but I...
I'd like to suggest that you close the public hearing and continue it for decision, instead of having everybody come back.
That's what I'm going to do.
Well, no. A motion to continue the public hearing means...
No, 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 no. I'm going to have it clarified. I know what I'm doing here. I know. I can run this. All right. So, Joe, your motion is to, well, first of all, I'm closing the public hearing right now. Is that okay?
Yes.
Motion to continue this at another date.
Period certain.
My understanding was that Mr. Perry wanted to continue the matter after the public hearing closed, for purposes of the decision-making for the town council. You have 45 days to do that, too.
To which I seconded.
I mean, we don't have to wait 45 days. We should be able to do this in a week or two. Let's at least continue it.
Put it on the next meeting agenda.
Renate a discussion.
So, you know, if that's what the majority wants to do...
Do we get a second?
I seconded you.
If that's what the majority wants to do, that's fine. But I have to say, this has now been going on since, I...
April.
Yeah, literally, for a very long time. And it's been continuance and send back to the planning board and another opinion. And, you know, I'm looking at the amount of money that both sides are spending on attorneys and expert witnesses, and I'm starting to feel really badly about what feels like we're kicking the can down the road. If everybody feels like they need more time to process this, it's okay. But I have to say that I think, you know, I've been paying attention to this for a really long time.
I can make a decision right now.
And I could make it, I could vote tonight. And I am concerned that leaving this in limbo isn't good for anybody in the long run.
Madam President?
Yes.
In one sense, I agree. But on the other hand, getting all this information, I don't know if it's going to be, if there's one little bit that's a little bit new. I don't know if there is or not, but I just got it. And I'll tell you something. I don't want to keep getting this the next time we, from either side, from either side or from anybody. Oh, by the way, here's another piece of information for you. It's like, you know, enough is enough. But I think it is, I think it's, I'd rather feel, I feel more comfortable reading it.
Anyone else? Any other discussion?
Madam President, I just, I agree with Council Ryan. And it sounds to me, too, one of the things that I think we need as a council to wrestle with is, do we want to do something about potentially illegal activity? And I actually want to follow up with the chief of police about illegal riding in the town. But do we want to do something about potentially illegal activity that's going on in our town, and how's it somewhere else? Or do we want to continue to force people to ride illegally? So I think ultimately, that's what it's going to boil down to, at least for this piece of the ordinance. And then whether or not that goes forward is going to be through the zoning board.
Well, see, I don't agree that that's what it boils down to. It boils down to is whether people in the R-80 who bought this land should really be hearing this noise day in and day out. That's what I believe it boils down to. I think Ray has a perfect project, but he needs to put it somewhere else. That's what I think.
Want to trade me 200 acres in the industrial park? Well, it's trade-off. How's that?
If you want to buy 200 acres in the industrial park, I think we would like you to do it.
No, I didn't say buy. I said trade. I bought 200 acres on Brayton Road.
Yes, but you bought it as an R-80, Ray.
No, I bought it as a...
Madam President?
No more.
I have a question.
Yes.
With, if the applicant can lower the noise decibel, limit a bike size, or something where these guys can go ride, make the neighbors happy, shouldn't we give them 45 days to make some kind of a determination if this is actually possible, so that they can lower the noise ordinance down, they're not breaking any ordinances, if they can make the neighbors happy, if Ray does his design over there, cease and desist, give him his chart, close, let him close this place up so there's no more noise?
Yeah, I just think that, at this point, I have a motion on the floor to continue this. I don't think we should get any more material. I think that what they want to do is allow this on every R-80, and on spot zoning, every R-80 will have this. And I think that I'm just going to continue from here.
Can we get that on the next agenda, the next meeting agenda?
Oh, you know what? I personally think, well, no, the public hearing is closed. Okay. I was going to say, if the public hearing wasn't closed, I was going to do this on a separate night. Yes, we can try to get it on the next agenda. The next agenda is pretty lengthy, but we'll try to stop some of, we'll try to put some other stuff off for the next agenda. So I have a motion in the second to continue hearing until April 9th, to continue...
The matter.
The matter, until April 9th.